いつも死にたくなるけれど思うままに生きよう愛せなぜないもん生けるどこまで行こうよダウンダウンダウン寂しくなってもうバイバイバイ泣きたくなるよずっと曖昧な自分嫌になってもっと愛してね愛してね裏切って裏切られてるよ何回も切ってだけでもかんないの知ってるよ僕関西棒自分のせい影のせいたり前さえできないもんうつだってくだらねえほど熱く抱いたいよどうのこうしご飯目立てるやつあいらついちゃ考えすぎずにさシャフになる日もありじゃん結局いつも死にたくなるけれど思うままに生きよう愛せなぜないもん生けるどこまで行こうよ通にもなれやしないけど誰だってあなたになれやしない尊いじゃんマジありがとう無理すんなもの知られたってうざいたって今が楽しければさ手くされたっていい钳離せばいい笑顔にさせる夢を持たせる身格否定されてまた笑いして誤魔化してる時どんどん増していくのにこの手離さないよいやぶち壊して嘘だらけの世界ほら描いてあなたなりの世界もの知られたってうざいたって今が楽しければさ手くされたっていい钳離せばいい笑顔にさせる夢を持たせる破されてももれない夢を見ていたい笑っちゃうクライ響け自分自身の不満嫌われても関係ないジャムジャムジャムそれぞれのスター今所がないなら連れ出すよ消え去ってしまいたい時もアイドンキャ君がいるから暇になる
I forgot to load in on the screen. Beans! Hello? Hi? Is this thing on? Hi? Can you see me? Can you hear me? Hi! Oh my god. I'm just gonna be uncomfortably close to the screen. Game on screen. Yo! Hello! My god, let me say hi. Let me say hi. Hi Coffee. Hi Coffee, hi Sheppy. Hi Mochi. Hi Light. Hello, Lisha, welcome in. Hello Diamond, hello. Proper, hi, 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 hi. My god, I'm just woke up in. Freddy! Airblaze, hi. Good morning. Riku, yo, welcome in. Jam, hello, hello. Hello, hello, hello. Welcome in, party people. I'm very tired, as per usual. Oh, up close? Yeah, yeah, we're uncomfortably close today. I just think it's more fun like this 'cause I get to do this. Good morning, yeah. Good morning? It's super nice and cozy and rainy here today. I'm fucking vibing. Thank you for the lurk coffee, thank you. I'm going to hide in here for a bit. Why are we hiding? What are you hiding from, Riku? Why are we hiding today? Up close zoom in. I got you, hi. Thank you for the care package coffee. Ooh, Rachel is always with me, yeah. I like that it's rainy and chill but I also don't know if I have enough natural light in this room. I might need to turn my lamp on, we'll see. Kissy! There you go. There you go, good morning Kissy. Good morning Kissy. Okay, enough of that. Nope, there I go. Now I'm no longer close to the screen. Hope you're feeling well. I'm feeling okay. I'm feeling alright. Yo biker, welcome in. Howdy, howdy. How's everyone's Sunday morning going? No, I made streamer zoom out. How dare you? I come in close to give kisses and stuff and y'all throw things at me. Like, what did I do? I'm just out here trying to give you a little love. I like that crabgy mouth. That shit's vibing. Oh shit! Cool people, yeah. Already be throwing things at me. Zoom in Kissy's, yeah, you don't get anymore. Anymore. Yami! Oh shit, stop! Stop! Stop throwing things at me. Hi Yami, welcome in. Oh my fucking god. No, I'm going insane right now. Look at the fuckin', oh! Shmoovin', for real, that crab is going. And... That didn't work for some reason. Why? Oh, it disconnected again, my bad. There you go. Yeah, 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 yeah. So... I did, um... I did a little work offline, just a little. I didn't do as much as I wanted to, it's just sad. That's okay, I was working on other things. Yeah. Y'all have a chill Sunday morning so far because I just woke up. I woke up like... No, I woke up at four and I fell asleep again. I woke up at four, I sent like a single DM and then fell asleep again. And then I woke up at, uh, seven. And I was like, oh, okay, perfect shit. I got like seven something. I'm gonna get some better rest this week, yo. I guess. Ay, yo, Mine? Yo, Mine in my chat? Hi, Mine! And hello Shaun and welcome in. Oh my god. Mine, I haven't seen you in 27 years, my guy. Every time Mine shows up, I'm like, yo, what the fuck? Hope you're resting well. Aye. I'm trying my best. Maybe viewers want me to wear a maid outfit for Freak Out Friday but I refuse. Dang. Um, sounds like you should just put on the maid outfit, Riku. Um, I don't, I don't know about you but that sounds like you don't have a choice in matter. I think you should put on the maid outfit, Riku. Riku, I think it's time. Real! Yay, close up again? Do you like when I'm close? You like when I'm close? Observe the glitter on my face, please. Sounds like a maid outfits in your future, yeah. I don't know. I don't know, it just sounds like it might happen. Ba 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 ba. I'll take you a bit of the recommended. That's funny, that happened to me too. Yami kept getting in my recommended. I was like, oh wait, wait, don't I follow Yami on Twitter? It was like, wait, I should probably follow on Twitch too. I forgot. Hate waking up the falling asleep again back and forth. Yeah, I've been struggling. I have been getting not good sleep. Glitter material girl, I'm Material Girl! That's me. I'm Material Girl. I have to stop. Hello, hello, everyone. Hello Papaya, hello. Met you, welcome. Why did I read that right? Choi, welcome in. Supreme Choi. Love your art on Twitter and I saw you in my recommended. I'm so happy I found your stream. Yo, welcome in. Hi! Howdy! Manifesting more rest for you, please. Please, I feel like I sleep too much and I'm still tired. Yo! Oh my god. Oh, hold on. A cat wants to be in my room. Give me a second. Hello, hello. Hi, hello. Hello, hello! Uh, can you hear me? I'm here to help you get settled on your first night, anyway. Good morning, lol, I feel that. Hi, welcome in. Oh my god. A kitty, sleep is a drug for real, for real. She's snoozing, yeah, I was snoozing for a second. Slinky's in now. My cat, Slinky, he's in here. Oh my god. I saw the gendered bit version on Twitter. Yo! Yeah, I love that design. I would love to make a model of that design. Someone give me money so I can not take another commission and instead work on that model. Make it a sub-goal, no. But yeah. Hi, hello. Hello! Neil, welcome in. Oh my god. Hydrate, yeah, five nights at Muras. Would y'all spend five nights with me? Smile. Oh no, my water. Oh my god. This is really one of my faves, it's so clean. Yo, thank you! I'm really close for no reason. Thank you, thank you. They just found my new 2D model art mama. Good luck to everyone who wants model stuff from me. Um, I'm supposed to be opening in September. Uh, I need to DM some people, but, uh... Supposed to be opening in September. I think I'm gonna do the same thing I did last time and take four slots. So... Good luck! The gamble! My VTuber children get a little twitchy, I know. Yo, wait, come back? Oh, okay, 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 okay. I'll do it for Freddy. There you go, my love. Freddy, my beloved. I'd do anything for you. Oh my god, I love your model so much, it's so pretty and pink day? Oh, oh my god. Oh no, it will be different mural, different types of outfits. Good luck to those wanting Muras a mama. Good luck! Good, good luck indeed. Good luck. It's getting really tempting to start prioritizing VTuber model stuff over any other commissions I do 'cause I have more fun doing them. Yeah, there's more money! Nah. I feel like, uh, if anything, I'd like stop like... Not my rough sheets but like my, like just like drawing commissions or something, I don't know. We'll see. We'll see how that goes. But anyway, speaking of my kids, let's head over to this screen. You ready? You ready? Hi, it's Sheppy! Wow, it's Sheppy again, wow, we're working on Sheppy still, of course. Uh, where's my tablet? Hi. So, offline, I did a little work on him. He got a little work done. Uh, I didn't do that much. I like started turning like the rest of his body. And if I go in here... Go in here. Can't really see it. Uh... I did his tail, I did his tail idle. It's the British boy, yeah. I did, I did the idle on his tail. And like he has like a little bit of body turning. But, uh, that's all we got, baby. That's as far as I got. Did like the rest of the cape. I need to fine tune like the belts and shit, like all that. But yeah, his tail go. And it's a little reactive to like the way he moves. It's a little reactive. The tail, yeah. Really Slinky, I just let you live here, you wanna go back out? Are you sure? If I let you out again, I'm gonna close the door. I don't know what he wants from me, anyway. It's cute. Yeah, um, I wanna do some adjustments. Um... It should react to everything, it reacts to up and down too but I don't have any of those up and down movement. Slinky is expressing his opinions, maybe he likes the tail. Also, hello, uh, Janay, welcome in. I hope I pronounced that right. I'm Muras my mom but it would probably be two to three years before I could get live 2D. Struggle, struggle tweets. Oh my god. Ms. Murra, do you have any advice for anonymous artists who are struggling to draw males? Look at references. That sounds like default art advice but I am not joking. Look at references, look at, uh... I looked at a lot of like fashion stuff specifically. Like I drew a ton of male fashion bullshit but I was making myself learn to draw guys. Alright, Slinky wants out. Slinky did not want out, I wasn't looking at him. He actually just wants to go in my closet for some reason. Which, okay, I guess. There you go. Are you content with that? Are you content? But yeah. But yeah, uh, if you see the Sheppy in chat, that is who this model belongs to. That is, uh, him. Our British fox boy. Papa Cato, that is my cat, Slinky. He is a menace. He is committing crimes at all times. Yeah. Oh my god. There TikTok recently, now you popped in my suggestions on Twitch. Really? I don't post on TikTok. I have a TikTok account but I don't post on it so if you actually see me on TikTok, it's someone else doing it. Or I'm in Keishen's comments. I'm in Keishen's comments all the time! I have problems, anyway. I like the little curl the tail does, yeah. I like how it's a little reactive to how he moves, I think that's fun. But yeah, there's his tail. Hi Astro, hello Astro, my wife. Look at my Uber Eats Tokyo Driftin' Ben Ask For My Orange Juice. Yo, already, thank you for the Prime Sub, thank you, I appreciate it. Yo, oh my god. Can't go over the tail switch, yeah, he's swishing. He's swishing now. Oh, wait! There's another thing I could have shown you. Wait, I'm a fool. Here, so he's switching, he's swishing, right? Uh, I have this as well. Where I just like had a big rotator on it and reversed the order and now it's at the top. I don't know how useful this will be but I have it set up for the smile thing. But, uh, yeah. That's what I have it set up for. Listen, that is excellent, oh my god. The sketch you did and she's scared? Oh. Why scared? Why scared? That's an odd reaction. Yo! Tail could theoretically go up when he's shocked. Yeah, theoretically. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll see, I have to figure out... I literally don't know how to do the smile thing. Like I have to go watch a tutorial to do that. Like I had to go watch a tutorial to do the tail again 'cause I forgot how to do it like last time, anyway. Doing this tail was a battle 'cause this is Skinning. His whole tail is Skinning and me and Skinning do not get along. We do not. Are you good, my guy? Yo, Slinky going, he going a little wild over there. He's running around my room now. Maybe he'll tire himself out. Maybe this is the plan. Maybe this may, they plot all along. Is this using the full size? Yeah, it is. Um, let's not do that. Like to not do that. Can I use the half? This is your hairline, it's only really accurate example of my personal favorite ethnic hair type. I've decided two months studying your genius, thank you so much. Yo, welcome in. Appreciate, she thought you're doing my VTuber model 'cause I showed her Keishen trip. I told her, no, it's a reference sheet. Oh, oh my god, no. Do you mind explaining the process of Skinning? I've heard the concept before, I don't fully understand it. Skinning, what it does is... It takes like either a deformer path or like rotation deformers and it takes one mesh, breaks it into several other meshes and glues those parts together so that it can have better movement. So like, if it'll unfreeze, I could show you his tail. I pressed T to give it, to make it give me the half preview and now it's fighting me. It's okay, I didn't do anything so I can just restart it. Please, Live 2D. Do you wanna be a functional program today? I don't think it does. Alright, give me a second. Let me out. Let me out. Let's do this instead. It wants to fight, so I'll let it fight. Nah, die. Pass away. Be gone, program. There we go. Hi, this clip studio paint now. Um... I did not sleep since, uh, the last time I messaged you, wifey so if I disappear, please go, go to sleep. Please don't be here and go to bed. Froggy pencil, yeah, I use froggy pencil, that's my sketch brush. Hello Shu, welcome in. Hi, Skinning is, Skinning damn, it's that hard to rig. I hope everyone's having a good day today. Skinning was me fighting Live 2D last night. But, uh, here, let me in again. Let me in again. Let me in again, please. Please, 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 thank you. Please, 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 thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so, bye. Not like that. Frog? Uh, there is a brush in my clip studio paint called Froggy Pencil, but yeah. So, here, let me do this as well. Let me have tiny hair and then be in this corner. Hi! So, uh, you see if I go over here... You see like at the bottom? Where it's like all these rotation deformers, right? See all those? Hi. You see all those, yeah. Okay, that's a fucking result of Skinning. So if I go in here and I like mess with any of these rotation deformers, right? Like I click this one? You see like... It's glued to the other parts so it doesn't break or anything. And that's how Skinning works. You can do this with rotation deformers. I did this with a deformer path because of the shape of the tail. But, uh, yeah. It just generates it for you and it takes several tries usually. Anyway, let me stop being down here. Hi. Herman is a brush now, good for him, yes. Hello, love Murra, hi, new, welcome in. Welcome in, also hi kitten, welcome in. Welcome in, welcome in, oh my god. Whoa! But yeah, um, I want to do today... We're skinning good for outside of tails. Uh, long pieces of hair, I've seen as well. You got like really long hair, sometimes people do skinning there. It's usually stuff, just generally stuff for like flowy physics, I feel like. Is where people would usually use it. Stuff that has like flowy wavy physics. Hello chat and love Murra, hello Akari, welcome in. Has indeed a process but it also looks worth 'cause the tail looks so smooth. And I'm Deepred, alright.
Can't have nothing here, we can't have shit in Detroit. Can't have shit here. Oh my god, Anon, thank you! Thank you for the two gift subs, what the heck? I appreciate it. Oh my god, oh my god, Muse got one, yo! I wanted to pop in and tell you that I admire you! Thank you, I'm sorry I'm Deepred right now. Okay. Um, 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 um. What is the glove that comes with our tablets? It's a smudge guard? Like it's to stop your hand from smudging the screen and also make your hand move smoother across the screen. I have different gloves but I'm not using my tablet so I don't really see a point in putting them on. Gosh! 'Cause I'm using my mouse for most of this. My guy is going wild over there! Okay, but yeah, um, let me in here. I wanted to finish up these body turns, oops, that is why. Wanted to finish up this 'cause I need to adjust. Like I did adjustments on one side and I didn't do adjustments on the other side! Oh, hello there, hi Jay! I'm out here. So yeah. I just need to go in here and fix everything. I think I might actually get rid of his belt for a second, uh... Yeah, there's a group for it, that's what I thought. Can I get rid of this for a moment while I do this? I see things. I see things that I already wanna fix. This is weird.
And there we go. Anyway, I was recommended the stream so I popped in 'cause I have no clue what Live 2D is, yo. Uh, good luck. That's wild. Oh, look at that turn, yeah, we're getting there. How does VTuber parents work? A VTuber parent is anyone who makes model. Anyone who makes model. Whether you do model art, you do model rigging. Sometimes people even count, uh, character designing as a part of the VTuber parent process. It just depends, also I see fucking clipping. Get! Get! How dare you? How dare you? Anyway. I see it on this side too. How dare you? Yeah. Okay, yeah. I'm part of the VTPA, the VTuber Parents Association. Okay, yeah. I'm part of the VTPA, the VTuber Parents Association. I make VTuber models, therefore I am a parent. Therefore people keep trying to call me mommy. Don't do that. As I said, don't call me mom, call me wife. Does that association have cookies? I feel like they do. I have no idea. I feel like VTPA has cookies. VTPA has good vibes only. Alright, let me in this side right in here. What kind of cookies? Ooh, good point. What kind of cookies? Do they have cake? Do they have cupcakes? That's important too. Cookies, cookies, cookies. Oh, wait. Why is none of? Oh, none of this side is linked. I only did the left side. Oh, I see. Ah, I understand. Okay. I will just do that really quick. As long as I don't fuck with any of the physics, we should be fine. We should be fine. Uh, let me do this here while I'm on it too, since I didn't before. Alright, cool. So we're gonna try and make this look less like a flat image real quick. I'll be the VTuber grandma association that has the cookies. Yo, they make it cookies. I am sitting here. Because I mean, you're my parent for doing reference sheet. Sometimes people consider that, so it's a possibility. I'd say, uh, only if I like really help design you. Maybe.
Hi Slinky. Hi, big boy. What are you doing?
He wandered. He's being a, being a little weirdo. Okay, so let's grab some of these. We want these to stick out more because we want these to be more 3D looking. I don't want to disconnect that though, so let's do that. VTuber grandma association have spare ugly Christmas sweaters? I hope so. That would be very cute, I think. I have more of these ones. Like this, and then I'm gonna grab this side. Like here, like these four. Oh my God. Hello, six oh six, welcome in. No sweaters. Oh, Mura, are you excited for any upcoming season holidays? Not really. I'm excited for the vibes that October is gonna bring. I'm excited for that. Yo, Kyo, welcome in, welcome in. Hi. I forget if I asked you this or not, but did you learn animation through art school or was it something you decided to pick up? So. Animation, live duty, rigging was entirely a hobby. It was entirely a side thing I did on my own, unprompted. Art school did not teach me shit. Don't even get me started on art school. Anyway. No, I learned live 2D on my own. I specifically picked up live 2D to do as my, as my thesis. Because they let us do whatever we wanted for our thesis that I was like, I'm gonna learn this program. And they were like, that sounds fine. And I was like, here I go. Bree did live 2D as her senior thesis. It was cool. She showed up to class as her 1.0 model. I did. I showed up with my chibi model. I was like, hi. What's your favorite drawing program? Hmm, I use Clip Studio Paint, so I guess that's my favorite. That is literally the only one I use. Oh wow, that's such a move. Yeah, I know art school would teach the same shit that you already know. Truly. Art school did very little for me. Agreed. Did they give you? Oh, I graduated like with all A's. Like I was fine. Look at my Uber Eats Tokyo Drifted, bad ass smell my orange juice. What the heck? What the fuck? Help. Why is it 19 months? Has it been that long? UT, have you known me for almost two years? Have you really known me for almost two years? That's kind of wild, actually. I was curious because animation has been so daunting for me to get into. It's one of my dream slash goals career. Only because I want to bring to life all my OCs. That's so valid. Yeah, no. Did you hear about the subscription thing? Yeah. Yeah, it's uh, not as bad as like the, the, the fucking announcement made it sound like they fucked up on that. They seriously messed up that shit. Like, oop. But um, yeah, I'm, I don't care. I don't care anymore. I don't like the precedent that it sets. Like I feel like it might look. My guy. He found his little pet, his little like toy mouse, and now he's going insane in the corner. Uh. What was I saying? Oh, I don't like the precedent that sets that it might be getting Clip Studio Paint users used to a subscription type service. I don't like that idea, but I, I don't care. What's, uh, what's gonna happen is that they're gonna release Clip Studio Paint 2 and I'm just going to keep using one until I can't anymore. Hi wife. Yo, welcome in. An intellectual. And I'm taking photography. Oh shit, yo, nice. And art, nice, nice. A true Chad. Same, same, honest to say. Yeah, I don't. Uh, whatever. I am just going to exist here doing what I've always been doing. That is the plan. Why is this not doing anything? Why are you like, not, like not doing anything in the slightest? What the fuck is going on here? Why are you doing that? That is this, right? Like I'm not going insane. What is happening? Wait. Did I accidentally remove it? I did. That's what happened. It escaped. It escaped. That's what happened. That's happened to me before. I accidentally dragged something out of a deformer. Okay. You need those. Get back here, mesh. How dare you try to leave? You think you can leave that easily? You think you can escape? You silly little mesh. How dare you try it? Alright, that's fine. I think that's good enough. Let's do the other one. This one down here. Mesh running. They're trying to escape. For what? I just wanted to form you. You already know. Oh yeah. Oh my God. Okay, so this one. Now we're gonna do the same thing. Actually, on this side, did I like make it so that it? Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Let's see, let's see. Okay, for real. I'm gonna try to sleep. Good night chat. Be good to Bree or I'll wake up and get you. Thanks Astro. Thank you. Get some sleep, my love, my beloved, my love, my beloved. Here, let me, let me, let me. No one gets any other kisses. Those are for Astro. Those are for Astro. Those are Astros. Good night kisses. No one else gets them. I let you draw it. Also, I'm new. Not drawing. I'm actually live 2D rigging a, a, a model. A little VTuber model for my guy Sheppy. Demand creation like the same. Okay, tree gets a kissy. Wait. Mwah, there you go. This guy here, I heard I just wanted to form you. Yo, live 2D terminology be like. Listen, listen, it's fine, it's fine. Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. Thank you for the hand stretch. Thank you. Look at my Uber Eats Tokyo Drifted, bad ass smell my orange juice. Yo, Gomuch, thank you. Thank you for the sub. I appreciate it. But kisses, you have to pay me for kisses. Everyone else has to pay me for kisses. Astro gets free kisses from me because Astro is my wife. I am Astro's wife. Many free kisses. See, look, UT, UT, I got you. I got you. There you go. Hell yeah. Thank you. Oh my God. Yeah. I'm going a little wild right now. My brain's going uh, too fast. I need to fix that too. What the fuck? Look how like weirdly wide that gets. And that's how you do that. That's how you get a kissy from me. That's how you do it. That's how you get a little kissy from me. Okay. Bring this like out as well. Who threw one thing at me? Wow. Dying down now. I will stay here a little longer. Okay, okay, okay. I see how it is. Kissy from Mochi. There you go. I got you. I got you, I got you. Um, I think I need to up this. I'm being, oop. That's not what I want. It's not what I wanted to do. That is not what I wanted to do. Oh, I did that backwards. I did that wrong. Tee hee, tee hee, oopsie, 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 whoopsie. Whoopsie, tee hee, tee hee. Um, do like eight and then go here and then do the thing I just did. Oh my God. Tricks of being Bree's wifey. Yeah. Yeah, you get kissies. You get kissies. That's all I have to offer. Smile. Okay, alright, okay, alright, okay. Why? I look forward to the video when we can head pat. I gotta figure out how to do that. I needed to actually figure out how to do that. Because I don't know how. I genuinely don't know how to do a little head pat. I keep seeing people have it. I don't know how to do it. They squeak? Yeah, they, they squeaky sounds when they, when they hit me. They make the squeaky sounds. Oh shit. Can I grab like down here maybe? Or like, like this one? Yeah, that's better. Okay, let's try and make this less, less whatever is happening here. Here, I'm just gonna grab both of these and just go like. Yeah, that makes me feel better. Okay. I, a menace, choose to go above and beyond. Wow, I was at least nice and did one ball. How is that nice? So you deserve head pats? I do. I need to figure out how to get head pats. I gotta go figure that out. I don't know how to do it. I want head pats. I think that would be a nice wholesome interaction instead of throwing things at me. Instead of throwing things. Look at this one. This one gets super fucky too. Okay, hold on. What's happening here? Um, I don't know if I can do the same thing I did on the other side, but let me see this for now. And then I'll, I'll do them individually. Go like this way. Why are you fucky? Why are you fucky? Ooh. What is happening? Look at that. That, that's a little better. I know it doesn't matter much on this side at least because the book would be covering it, but anyway. Hello. Mercy, welcome in, welcome in. Welcome in. But yeah, uh, ba da ba da ba. Prepare for the head pad attacks. I feel like when I get the head pad, it's just gonna be on constantly. It's just gonna be on my head at all times. You will turn your body, sir. I still don't know how I want to do his legs. I was thinking maybe I do just like one singular step and then the other one be like a turn. Maybe like I could try that. I could attempt that. I didn't even bother getting to like turning his, his shoes or anything. I just gave up. I just stopped last night because I was tired from fighting the tail. Okay, like a fencer step. Yeah, just like one. The artist mood. I was like, nah, nah, we'll, we'll do more tomorrow, I guess. I guess. Me, my X, Y on this. Thank you. And I'm going to scale this in. There we go. Yeah, I didn't do the turns on this side, I don't think. I did it like this way, but I didn't do it like this way. Like I can tell this one's like warping weird. How are you this talented and amazing? I'm losing my mind. I'm trying my best out here. I'd be struggling. Don't e, don't even worry about it. I'd be out here suffering for no reason. I do this to myself. Alright, let me see that. Um. Yeah, and do the bottom one too. Lower. That feels acceptable. That feels fine. That feels acceptable and fine and fine and acceptable and acceptable and fine. But it looks so good. How do you struggle? Oh, listen, I'm glad that I did the tail last night, so I wouldn't have to do what I had to go through on screen. That was some bullshit. Yeah, as a non-artist, this is all witchcraft and magic to me. You're so valid, Sheppy. Sheppy, listen. Did you see his tail? Here, I'm gonna show you his tail again. I'm gonna show you his tail. Look, his tail goes swish, swish. His tail be swishing. Okay. His tail be swishing. His tail reacts a little to his movement. His tail be swishing. Okay. And he finishes body turns. His tail be swishing. Swish, 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 swish. Sheppy tail swish, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Also, I fucking figured out why I couldn't get his head Z to work. I had two of my inputs inverted on accident. I put the numbers in the wrong spot. That's what happened, but I fixed it now. I fixed it now. Trying to decide how. I haven't got my own model for a second. How did I do like? The up and down. Okay, so I just brought the knees together. That's what I did. I brought the knees together for the down. I couldn't remember. I'll see if I can do something like that, but I don't think I want to give him steppies. I might give him one step. I don't know. Oh no, tricky numbers. Yeah, I was a fool. I was a silly fool. Like what made me realize is like I was clicking and dragging around. I was like, little dot where Z is, isn't fucking moving. What did I do? What's making this break? And then I opened an example model again and I was like, ah, I see what made it break. Sheppy Steppy, yo. Sheppy Steppy. I also want a position adjustment on the tail for when he turns. That would be nice. Because I think that it could happen. I think hypothetically speaking, that would be fine. Also have a big physics warp on the coat of the tail. A coat? What? The, the coat of the jacket? My God. Like this part, the lower part. We'll see how that, how, how that does. I don't know. Don't fuck, you know anything? This is a stream where I don't know what I'm doing. Okay? I'm not gonna think about it too hard. That's another thing. I don't have any, I don't think I put any deformers in like his arms or anything and I need, I need those actually. Because I would like these to turn. I'd have physics, the little folds can have physics, but I also wanted them to turn. Let's put those together. Put those together. Give me. Y. X, Y. I'm gonna have so many fucking physics bullshit going on. I like think about it. Oh man. Oh, oh. I never noticed the continue creation button. Yeah, sometimes I use it. Most of the time I forget it's there and I named that wrong. That's okay. A continuous creation just lets you keep baking deformers on top of each other. Boop, boop. Um, please get, give me X and Y. You will get X and Y. Good to use for next time, I guess. Yeah. There's like, if I like went through the effort to make shortcut keys, I'm sure my entire process would be a lot faster, but I, I can't. I can't be bothered. I'd just be going up there and clicking the individual buttons. And I was rigging some hair pieces. Oop, well. What if I just fuck everything and decide to do hair physics today instead of anything else? Because I don't want to. I don't want to keep doing the body angles. They hurt my brain. No, I should figure it out. Save the fun stuff for last. Oh, Slinky has finally decided to get in bed. I can close my closet door. He really ran around my room, got tired, and now he's in bed on my blankets again. Good night, sweet prince. Don't look at me. Go back to bed. Put your head down. Don't look at me. You have a mini keypad to download H A D macro. You can program it to what you need. You have a mini keypad to download H A D M A for you can program it to what you need. Even that sounds like too much work. There we go. And then every other physics on the arm. That's gonna be by rotation deformer, so. Should be fine. Should be fine. Probably do some X Y on his actual arms. Just to add them there. Would make sense just in case, just in case I need them. Just to have a little turning. I'll put them in here. I have a question. Why is one of your stream tags preheat oven to 350 degrees Fahrenheit? Um, I put that tag in there and Coffee said I should keep it and I was like, okay. Listen, don't worry about it. Don't think about it too hard. Good morning, fashion high. Hello, hello, welcome in. No, what happened was I, I was setting up stream and I was like, why did Twitch delete all my tags again? I'm gonna put some bullshit in here this time. Twitch stopped clearing my tags challenge. Please. Please and thank you. Just to make that bread. Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Thank you. That's what we are doing. That is what we are doing. This is where you click it and find out there's more people using it. You preheat oven to 350 degrees Fahrenheit. Okay, so, and then this arm. Give me this arm. Give me your arms, Sheppy. Give me your arms. Those are mine now. Those are mine. I'm the only one with a tag? Yo! I feel special. My arms? Those are my arms? No, Sheppy, those are mine. Those are my arms. It's okay. I just need them for a second. It's okay. I just need them for a moment. Um, give me these four. Okay, so, I'm gonna do like, oh, that's the wrong one. I'm gonna do like this. Like a little bit of this action. Just a little. See if that works. Yes, that's kind of what I want. Where would this one go? Arms, hand him over. I need them so that I can add a little amount of turning to them. It's fine. Just a little. I kinda like that. Hey, cool. Yeah, I'm gonna work on this model a lot off stream, I think. I might even be wild and do a stream like Monday night or something because I wanna work on this a lot. But I get a lot, like the majority of it done. What am I drawing? I am rigging a live 2D model. I'm making the body move. This is a fox boy named Sheppy. This is a fox boy named Sheppy and his body is turning. Trade offer. Re-receives. Arm. Sheppy receives. Cool sleeve movements. Yeah. Exactly. See, this is fine. He's starting to turn. That's cool. Thank you. Burger King foot lettuce voice? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Clicks accept. Thank you. You know, like me turning Sheppy like da 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 da. He's going. He's going. He's going faster. Anyway. I'd rather have four arms and no legs or four legs and no arms. I'd rather lie motionless on the floor. Well, my titties are like, who am I seeing? Sheppy rolling around this beauty. He looks like a Terminator when you do that. I don't know. That's what I'm getting. He's approaching. He's rapidly approaching. That's what's happening. Around the world, around the world. Yo, so true. Anyway, let me put all of these back on him so that I can see. What was I doing? What was I doing before this? A little bit of this, a little bit of this action. Hi, is there love or mur or love mur this time? Hi, my name's Love. Hi, my character's name is Love. That's the, that's the canon now. I also don't care what you call me. Good morning, Drift. Welcome in. Yo. Oh, you are approaching me. Yeah, that's what's happening. This is happening. Look at him go. Um, give me the, 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 the back one. Yeah. Yeah. This one. This one. And I shall call you father from now on. Do I have father energy? Do I have father energy though? Am I worthy of the title? That's the thing. That's what's important. This is the chaotic energy I need in the morning to join these streams more often. Ah, thank you, Chidori. You kinda have? You think so? You think so? Oh my guy. We're like fun people. Yes, Slinky? What was that? Slinky made a really tiny meow, but I looked over there and he's still asleep. My guy, are you okay? I think he's falling asleep. Grandma energy? Me. So, so true. My back hurts constantly. Um, I think I have big grandma energy. I was supposed to paint my nails yesterday and I did not. Slinky dreaming. Yeah, he's, he's sat there. He's chilling. I don't know what's up. The loaf be dreaming. He is loafing, actually. He loafing for real. I just noticed something else that I wanna fix now. Can I see this? On this side, I feel like this should move more than I have it. And I think I already did that on the other side. I just forgot. Yeah, I did. Okay. Oh my god. Give fun big sister vibe, but no weird like you were the cool sister that would let us eat two cookies after dinner instead of one. Oh my god. That's inspiring. I don't wanna be the one who says, oh, but damn, he looks Olympic. So true! His waist is snatched. Um, I don't do this intentionally. It happened to Keishen too. Uh, it just seems to be the way I'm drawing models. His waist is snatched! His soul! Listen, he can be skinny if he wants. He can be skinny if he wants. Okay? I think it's kinda funny. Like I don't think it looks bad or anything. I just think it's kinda funny. Men with buba, that's the dream right there. I'm pioneering male VTubers with more buba. I'm pioneering a look. Um, I'm engineering a look. You see? You see, I'm going for a vibe. Oh, my back. I feel like if I'm not given more direction, I do this by default. But in snatch waist, that's the dream. Yeah. It's a look. It's a look. What can I say? What can I say? It's a look. It's a vibe. Actually, I'm going to take each one. Each one and put this like down, I think. Down. Like not as far out as I had it. Okay. We can do that. And put your footing, you put a foot in Keishen model on this one. Let's try it too. So keep making them something. I don't know. It keeps working out. So what can I say? I don't know. It just keeps working. I could summon Keishen's model here right now. He's a skinny legend. What can I do about it? I don't know. I have to stop Anthony Brockto fixing. Thank you for the care package, by the way. Thank you. Um, oh shit, I forgot to do my timers. Well, we're starting that now. Completely forgot. I literally, I got the timer cubes to do this and then I forget to do them. Okay. Other sleeve. I have to actively go out of my way to not find default. Default to giving the titty windows. Uh huh, that is totally something I don't do. Smile. Does this count as a titty window? The thing is, Sheppy's design was already like this. I just added the necklace. Does this count as a titty window? I don't think it. I don't. More like cleavage. You're so right. Thank you. Please don't make that face at me. This is just normal cleavage. Yeah, okay, 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 okay. Titty channel. I swear I didn't do it on purpose. I swear. I swear this wasn't my intention. I swear. I swear, Sheppy, this wasn't my intention. Um, I've already forgotten the way I was doing this. Okay, so this way, it's gonna come like this. Nope, this one. Like that way. Beer be chipped for food. Okay, Sheppy. The necklace has to be one of my favorite things on the model, so good job. Yo, thank you. I'm gonna struggle to rig it probably. Because I wanna, I wanna try my best to make the physics look good. Um, that's the one thing I'm worried about. Any other physics, whatever. The necklace, I'm like, oh no. I'll select these two. Hey, maybe I don't need both. Maybe I just need one of them. Okay, okay. Good morning, jellyfish. Welcome in. People who can color gold are so powerful. You think so? I like speed ran the, the gold on this. His gold's reflective too. It's like hard to see in this. Maybe if I... What are you doing live 2D? Why are you doing that? What the fuck? Anyway. If I, um, if I come in here on the, on the like clothing, it's not on the necklace really yet, but that is a gap. What the fuck happened there? Oh, I need to fix that. What happened there? Oh, I need to see about that. What did I do? That wasn't there before. Uh, I broke something. Yeah. The fuck did I do? Hold on. I have to see about that now. When did this happen? What have I done to you, my boy? Oh no. What did I do? I have a feeling it's, I might have fucked up one of the physics deformers instead, maybe? That's my best guess. No, it doesn't. Oh, wait. Wait, where is the warp deformer? Oh, they just got un nested again. That's an easy fix. Never mind. Never mind. We're fine. Crisis averted. We're fine. It just became un nested. We're fine. We're good. We're good. I think that fixed it. Okay, cool. That, I scared myself for a second. Also, there's a gap there. See that? Yeah, fix that too. But that's fine. I can fix that. That's easier to fix. Anyway, I was saying about the reflections on the gold. That was it. That was all this was. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Is that a brother? Hi! You have to give it, you have to give it a real life physics where if you turn too much, all of a sudden the cute part is on the back of your neck because people can't see the glass because it's rotated. Yeah, when he moves, the necklace has to fly around. I'm gonna need to worry everyone. I fixed it. I fixed it. It's fine. It's fine. It's fine. I'm no longer panicking. But yeah, I need to do the up and down. But um, I'm too busy being annoying about the corners right now. Stream title, relate? Hi, you! Yeah, yeah, relatable. Relatable. Free my Google mini herd. I scare myself from you and scared the shit out of me. What? Oh my god. Hello, you. Hi. Welcome in. I hope you're doing well. Oh my god. It started playing music. From some title called that? I hate this. This is why we don't have any voice command stuff enabled ever. I was wearing such a cute double chain butterfly necklace last night. I swear it was on the side of my neck like half the night. All we do is suffer. All we do is suffer. What was I doing? Oh, I was gonna fix. Why, Riku? Why would you do that? I suffer today. Um, this isn't the thing I wanted though. I wanted these. These. So that I can hopefully put this back this way. And then check this. Yep, we're good. We're good again. It's on the other side too, actually. Okay. I can fix that, but that's easy to fix. That's an easy thing to fix. That's an easy, easy fixable thing. I am not concerned because that is an easy fixable thing. That is a thing I can fix. Give me this. Go over here. Drag this this way. I will do it again. No! Not my glasses too. Why are y'all being evil? Oh. Why would you do that? Why'd you do that? Out on my crying toggle so I can't like be fake sad? Why would you do that? Stop! Stop throwing things at me! Anyway. I think I fixed it. I think I fixed it. I think I fixed it, okay, anyway. Reverb. Welcome to the reverb stream, hi, Zuchi! Good morning, Zuchi, welcome in! Let's test that, oh, no. How about... No. Look at that beautiful face, thank you, thank you, oh my god. Stop! Why? Welcome to the reverb. Coffee! Coffee's still here, coffee! We got coffee, hi, coffee. Every day I suffer. Every day I suffer. I suffer two times a week for your entertainment. Okay? Um, I think I fixed it. I love chaos, wow. I gotta sync up reverb and deep fry, they can't stack on top of each other, they will not work. Looking from PC, but I am on mobile and the coffee whip, oh! Oh shit! Where we going, coffee? Where we going? This is so funny, I was in a, I was, uh, on, on a call with Sungyee... Last night, he was driving around at like fucking... Like 11 o'clock at night, like 10 o'clock or something. I don't know, he's in a different time zone, he's in fucking California time. Um... He was driving around and getting like food, and like he stopped at Starbucks, I was like, this is the passenger seat experience I am having. I am in the passenger seat of the car. Waiting for my felon to get the hell out of the store, oh, valid, okay. Make them go faster. Okay, I'm done, finally. Aim free, also, hi, Maku! Maku, hello! Okay. Um, so I was doing arms, I was fixing the arms, then I noticed ship breaking, and I stopped. Okay... That went... Okay, gimme... Let me back in here. Let me back up here. I could just move this, but I'm gonna deform it. There we go! Oh my god, how's work going? Um, it's going, very slowly, very slowly it's happening, it's going. Bui your nose is now one big nose hole, that's me, so true. Wait, that's cursed. I'm trying, I'm try- oh! Didn't mean to do that. I str- I started doing Y, but it's literally nothing right now, like I just moved the upper body so I can have the position and nothing else, so... Don't mind that, don't mind his body disconnecting, ignore that. You didn't see that? Uh... Let me finish these turns first. I'm getting there. Okay, let me bring his belt back. The big belt. It should be up here somewhere. Huh, hi. McCross belt. I don't think I put deformers on anything in here, because shit in here is gonna need physics, and I didn't feel like it. What if I continue to put off doing all the detailing in the belt, actually? That might be fun. I may do that instead. I am missing... I am missing... What is this? What is this rotation deformer? It's just here, what are you? Neck. And then neck. And then neck. Okay, this is all the head stuff, I don't know why there's another one in here. But, uh, noted. Nose with teeth. Sure is. I'm just built different. Um... What was I looking for? There you go, hi. Honk, hello. Hello, just a random goose. Yeah, yeah, that sure is. Wait, this song is talking on, all of these songs that I'm playing are Takion, I am only listening to Takion right now. He keeps me motivated, hello! Milky bear, welcome in! Oh my god. Water. Thank you for the water. I love his songs, yes, I am a, I am a big Takion simp. He is very cute. And I stretch, yeah, I can do that too. I can stretch, yeah! No carpal tunnel, it's bad, thank you, thank you, you're so right, you're so right. Oh, my back! Stretch everything. What the fuck was I doing? I was about to do something... To... Oh, I remember! His bad snob, oh, oh cute! Hi, how are you today? I... Am chilling, I'm vibing. Um, streamer breaks back on streamer. No! I'm okay, you wanna see his tail? I wanna see Sheppie's tail. Why does live 2D keep doing this? Do you see? You can't see it. Yes, you can't. Like, the, the fucking things up here will just disappear at random. Not the goose bonk! I would love to sub, but I'm in a money crisis, you do not have to sub, no one has to sub. I'm just here to do things, to work on things, there's his tail. I like his tail. His tail's cute. I like watching the fucking physics pendulum go crazy over there, it's go wild. Don't mind me. Yo, this is awesome, thank you! That's so cute, yeah, his tail, his tail be schmoovin' now. Still be schmoovin', um... Over the past few weeks, we've done his head, his head angles. His head angles, his mouth and eyes are done too, but like, you can't see his mouth flaps. Hee hee, hee hee. So yeah... Now I'm just working on body, slowly but surely his body turns are getting there. Soon! Soon I will be free. Soon, I'm just gonna have to have a day where I like sit down for six hours straight and rig nonstop, that's what's gonna happen. Wild pineapple's on pizza, that is a whole pineapple on a pizza, wait! Yes! So true. Why do you also have that blaze? Oh, it's a global amount, I was so confused. Best food combo, I don't think I've ever tried it. I genuinely don't think I've tried pineapple on pizza. It gets a bad rep, but it's pretty solid. You think so? I return with Captain Crunch, are you winning, son? I am fighting for my life. I am looking for this part. It's all the way down here, that's why, okay. Um... Yeah, cuz I did like the correct rotation here, and then I didn't do it over here, so I'm gonna see if I can... The same thing happen, okay. Okay, cool. Okay, cool, cool, cool. I... We'll leave that alone for now. Easy mode, so cute, thank you, oh my god. Oh my god, gimme a second. There we go. My kid, I posted, is that letting me type? Oh, it wasn't letting you type, I don't know what happened. That was Twitch being Twitch, I guess. Pirate? A lot of people think he's a pirate. I don't know why. I mean, I guess I understand why, it's like a tailcoat type thing, right? It's the tailcoat type beat that makes you think pirate, but no, he's a librarian. Uh, he's a librarian, he has his little book. He's a magical fox librarian. Nice hearing about 2.5k follows, yo, oh my god! Here I am. My first experience with pineapple on pizza was that. Uh, one of my previous jobs tried it, now I'm a whole pineapple pizza disciple! Oh my god! He's a librarian, he's a librarian, yeah! I haven't tried pineapple pizza, so I can't judge. But even if, uh, would not like it, I would not judge them, because some happy people like something. No, I'll drag people for bad food taste, no! No, I'm kidding! I am kidding, I am kidding. It was funny, oh my god. Okay, let me put... I was doing the fucking... The some chatroom. I gone through many designs, oh my gosh. Now that's 100% a pirate, but he has a little book, he's so cute. He has a little book. Look at his little book, it's gonna have physics eventually. I can't say milk. Oh, I forgot I banned the word milk! Yo, I completely forgot about that! Milk is fucking banned! I have an emo for it! I forgot about that! Sheppie's back, welcome back, Sheppie! Hello, Sheppie, welcome back! I decided... I am happy with these turns. There's something weird. Will I ban it, though? There was a phase in my chat where everyone would not stop spamming a certain type of milk. So I just banned the word milk. So I banned the word milk, cuz I had enough. Doke, pilk, no, no, it's none of those. It's none of those. It was a very specific type of milk. And I had enough. I go for a bit, but I appreciate everything, you do have fun streaming, thank you for stopping by, yo, I appreciate it, is it what I think it is? Probably not. Probably not what you think it is. No. It was, it's not a pleasant type of milk. But it is a type of milk. Like, it's not like a euphemism or anything, it is an actual type of milk. Mommy milkers. But I still miss your point! Almond's milk, no, I remember what it was, Blaze was here for it! You see, Blaze was here for it! Oh! Look at my, oh, but he is Takion drifting, but not spilling oranges, I love being here with you, you're amazing artist, that's for you! Oh, you shipped it for me? For real? Thank you lovely! I appreciate it, tell us, no! No, 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 we don't talk about that. We don't talk about that. It's that simple. You're doing things that I cannot understand with this rigging thing, I did a template for my VTuber mall, but this thing points at rigging scares me! Oh, listen, at this point, I'm just kinda trial and erroring my way here. Can I like bring this back, actually? I don't like that. Maybe we can work with this instead, okay. I'm not gonna fuck with the belt, soy almond, it's a type of milk. We spam milk here. Oh my god. I just think it's funny how, how people have to keep censoring it. I'm gonna keep it banned, cuz it's funny how people milk it, uh, fucking... Censor the word milk. Oh my god, I remember what it is! You see? Some people were here for it. I was there! Sent to layer for live 2D, that did not go well, oh my god, listen. It's a, it's a struggle. It's a struggle, it's a learned skill. Takes several tries to get the hang of it. Memory unlocked. Oh my god, I think this is Takion's new song, wait. Yeah, this is Heaven. Okay, I can turn it up on just my end, window sound. Window sound. Window sound. This is his new one called Heaven, yeah! I love when Takion drops a new song, I'm like, oh, it's a blessed day today. Bu 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 bu. I love cheating is a crime, that is a classic banger. That is a certifi- certified classic! What's the only one I listen to, oh my god? Sakian, Takian has a lot of good music, uh... I feel, I feel like a lot of his music is very much vibey. I just noticed something. It's like... No, that's just the way I drew it, okay, never mind. I was about to... Be a little suspect. Intoy, yes! It was really good music, he just don't miss, he's incapable of missing, you see? You see, he cannot miss, in fact, actually. Actually, Takian legally cannot miss, I'm gonna put both of these here. See that like disconnecting at the top, I just wanted to fix that. I'm gonna see if it's doing it on both sides. Not as bad on this side. Okay. Oh, you know what I also wanted to do? See if I could... Get this... To... And might need more divisions than that to do this. Alright, nevermind, there's not enough height. This one? No, not that one, I don't wanna use that one. Just a little, like, I don't need a lot of that. Don't need a lot, okay. Okay. Other side. What did I do this? Uh-huh, 6, 9. Anyway. As real as your hairline makes a heart, it is, that is intentional. I have heart shapes all throughout my design. Very, very little amount, I don't need that much. Ever get a hydrant saved for canvas? Thank you, Demetri, thank you! Hi! Thank you! Thank you, Sheppie, for the care package. I got my nose with so fucking stuff, I wake up like that every morning. Every single morning. I will do all the things. Where do I try to go off, I feel like it should've been 30 minutes by now. I guess I didn't start it at the beginning, so... I have lived that too, but... Oh, I started this month, it hurts my soul. Oh, you've been cursed. Oh dear. Oh boy. Am I like, is this like good enough for me to start doing the up and down, I think? I feel... I feel like I just am avoiding it at this point, I feel like I should figure it out. What did I just do? I don't know what I just did, I hope I didn't delete anything. That would be awkward. Alright, let's see, let's see if I can get in this belt group, right? Why? What have I done to deserve this? I'm gonna move this down. And I'm gonna bring like, all of these down as well. In the middle. To create an artificial curve. IDK, wow. Unfuck your nose, changes which nostril to breathe through each... That's kinda fun. How the abuse personally, I would never. Surely, surely. Squish, yeah! We're just doing a little, little bending. It'll make more sense later, hopefully. Hopefully it'll look better in a second. That's how I felt working on Keishin's model. I was just like, um, I don't know what to do for this part, I'm gonna hope it looks good by the time I'm done, instead. I'm gonna put that on future me, it's not gonna be a me problem. Oh. It is time to stand. It is time to stand for a minute. Just trying to sit back down. There we go, oh, I put it upside down. No, stop, stop, don't do that. There we go. Okay! But as deep fry, it puts a filter on my mic and my model. That makes me into a JPG. Uh, sleeping idol, yeah, I fall asleep when, when, when I lose tracking. I'm gonna put that on Sheppy's model too. Here I go! Sheppy, how could you do this to me? Why would you do this to me, Sheppy? Sheppy! Sheppy, I thought you were a real one! Sheppy! I feel betrayed. Sheppy! Just showing the visuals! I'm going to cry. Only the realest ones look before you! Oh god, don't do that live 2D, don't do that. 64 bits, yeah, yeah, that's what's happening. You look like TV static, I sure do! I sure do look like TV static, every day I suffer. I'm trying to figure out what the best way to do the, the cape's gonna be, cuz that's what I don't know about. I think I can manage everything else, but the cape is like... I don't know what I'm gonna do for that. The phone guy from FNAF. Hello, hello! Hello, I'm here to help you get settled in on your first night! I hate it here. I'm wonderful quality, I don't know, look at my eyes! Makes me sad. I'm cursed. They put me in the microwave. This is what happens when you put an anime girl in the microwave. And we're free. Hello? Hello? They let me out of the microwave. Out of the microwave you go, I'm out, they let me out. Oh my god, okay. Um, I know I want, the way his chain is doing right now is not what I would imagine, so let's see what I can fix that a little. I can do something with that, maybe? I think I need another width division. No, I mean this way. Yeah, so there's one in the middle, okay. I can fix the size. Okay. Live 2D freezing, don't do that, please. Oh, kissy! I can do a kissy. Hi! There you go. In a Miss Fool Girl with a microwave for a face. Is that the vibe? Can't wait for Game Theory's two hour video on Lumburs FNAF lore. They put me in FNAF, dang! Uh, gimme, gimme this. I'm gonna bring this down. And this one, I'm gonna bring this one down. Okay. I'm gonna have to move the rest of his body down. I want the downward movement. The most fun part about the model is the downward movement, cuz you get the bouncy, that's where the bouncy comes from. I wish I had done it better on mine, so, give it a try. Impress shirt. Impress shirt down. I also, wait, I don't think I have, um... Um, I don't think I have the... Yeah, I don't. Uh, I don't have the tracking settings set for that, hold on. Uh... Where is it, I thought it was under... Settings of cursor tracking. And body... Body Y, left click mouse button Y. Let's do Z while we're at it too. X, okay. So now... No, it's still that, right? What did I do? It's still not reading it, I must've linked something wrong then. Uh, I might need to open the example thing. Yes, yes. Ye- yes. Yes, okay. So it's probably something in here. Why? Let me go open the example model. Good morning, my love, hi pretty! Hello, welcome in! I have to figure out why this isn't working now. And my guess is going to be just like Z, I probably linked something wrong. Let me look at another instance of live 2D real quick. Here is another instance of live 2D opening. Sorry for white screen, here we go. Go on this monitor. Go on this monitor instead. Look at the example model again. Physics, it's gonna open over here. Okay. This body Y. Let's see what I did wrong. Oh, I have the wrong output! Oh, I have the wrong output, wait, that's easy. What the fuck? That is not the correct output. Where are you? It should be this one, it should be this Y. There we go. Now he go down. How long have I been drawing? Uh, unironically, over a decade. Since I was a wee baby child. Now he go down a little. I think I might... Yeah, I think if I bring like this collar down, like this collar line down, those corners are... He bop it, yeah, he, he got a little bit of bop it now. Anyway, thank you example model for me being a fool, hopefully I won't do it again right now. Okay. Since I was a wee baby child, since I was fucking like, I don't know, 2007! There's a drawing I have from like 2008 or something that I read, I keep redrawing like every, I kept redrawing it like every two years, and I haven't done it in a while, and I think I should do it again. Wonder if I can find it, it's probably on my Tumblr. I scroll through the photo filter of my archive, I probably, probably can find it. Feel like it should be around here. Around here somewhere. Oh my god, Hello Charlotte, I found Hello Charlotte art, that is irrelevant. I used to draw a lot more fan art, I don't do that now! Yeah! There it is. This. Here it is. Oh, it's from 2010, okay. Here, I can just drag this over here. This picture, this is 2017. Here it is in 20, 2010. Here's in 2013, I wanna draw it again, 2022 version. I think it'd be fun. Of like some generic anime character, I feel like this was like a fan Vocaloid type character, cuz I was really into Vocaloid as a child. Wait, I can see my message on the screen, yeah! Yeah, there's a little chat box. Yeah, I should redraw this for a third, for a fourth time. So one day, one day I'll do that. Don't know when. I just think it'd be kinda fun. I've been drawing since around 2015, I see, no, I've been drawing since I could open MS Paint as a child. My art was probably drawn in MS Paint. It's cute, yeah! Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, what was I doing? Oh, I was making sure the Y worked, it's, it works now. And I was trying to decide how I want to make this look better. I'm going to close this. And go... Where's the big warp deformer? This one? I'm gonna move this down. Like, in the middle, and angle this down. Angle this down. I've been working on drawing ditchly, but I'm completely lost, but practicing is always fun. It's really just you, you mess around until you figure out stuff you like, I feel. Oh my god. Get a post on Tumblr again, I keep forgetting that that is a thing I can do. Should bring the other necklace down, the other necklace isn't in here though, it's in like the head parts, I think. Can I have this, can I reach in here? I can. Tee hee. Tee hee, tee hee. This one too, doesn't have like a thing in the center, there we go. Stumps me as liner and shading. You don't necessarily have to do liner or shading. Oh my god. The way people are drawn in Arcane, the TV show, oh! Good styles, thank you Coffee for a singular bonk, I am going to steal your kneecaps. The bonk sound effect is so good! I'm gonna get you! Thank you for the, 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 the care stuff, thank you, and my glasses are gone. Okay. I'm stretching, I do need to save actually, let me do this necklace, and then I'll save. And do the thing that I wanted to do. Wanted to do that. And actually even slips. Up a little, I'm gonna have to glue the neck finally, aren't I? I'm gonna have to glue it the same way. Oh, why are you broken now? Uh, I understand why you're broken now, fine. Give me a moment. There we go. I'm gonna sample it and make a bonk symphony? Why? I save. Why a bonk symphony? Why does it have to be a symphony? Can it be a bonk type beat instead? I hate it here. Everyone is so mean to me always, forever, this is so sad, I'm going to cry, I'm going to cry, and, and scream and cry. That's all I can do. No, don't cry, I'm going to cry. I'm going to keep crying, you drop these. No, don't cry. I'm going to cry. I'm going to keep crying. You dropped these. Thank you, Chidori. Thank you. Opened Twitter and someone replied to me acting up in Keishen's replies. Man. Man. Listen. It's fine, it's fine, it's fine. Listen. Not like this. I am minding my business now. Listen, listen. Listen, it was a moment of weakness. It was a moment of weakness. Okay, okay. It was a moment of weakness. It's fine now. I am a reformed person. Cap detected. I'm gonna go honk at other people's streams, so I'll be back. Have fun honking. I'm going to see this again unless I'm sorry. Listen. I mean, who doesn't act up in Keishen's replies? That, you know what, Sheppy, you are so right. You are so right, Sheppy. I suddenly invalidated it actually. This is fine. I'm gonna need to glue this. I think I saw that reply. Listen, you saw nothing. Listen, you saw nothing? Oh, I should go ahead and glue the chest to the neck, probably. I should probably. I don't know about that. Listen. You saw noth- You saw nothing. There is no questionable behavior here. What if I just leave it? What if I just continue to leave it until the very last possible moment instead? I think that would be better for my brain. Mm-hmm. See, I have an XY here and I have not done anything with it, unless this is for the face. Okay, cool. Um, let me do another one then. Or, okay. Next. XY. Body. Create. And this one will be for here. When you literally created the very thing you said for. The thing about that is... I said for Keishen as a person? As a person? I made the model, but as a person? The goose is back. Hello. Your feet are so pretty. Oh my god, thank you. Oh my god, welcome in. Welcome in, welcome in. I just gave myself a headache, I think. And I like drag this down. Or actually, is this a... Where I might just need to move the head down more? Wait, would that be easy? Maybe? It's okay if I can just kind of do this instead. Because if I can, then I'll do that. Yes. Yes, I think so. The funny thing is I have notifications turned on for Bree, so every time I see acting up tweet, I'm just like, Keishen reply. Sheppy, don't tell me these things. I don't need to know. Get back to lurking at a drive again. Okay, Coffee, drive safe. How many of y'all got tweet notifications on for me? Listen, I'd be saying too much stupid stuff for that. Ruby Daba, no! I'm going to pass away right here, right now. I'm 4K every day. I don't think it's every day. I don't think it's every day. Need to make sure I don't trip and miss an opening. Uh, valid. Listen, we be vibing and letting you exist, but also catching you in 4K. Every day I am having a breakdown. Every day I'm going through it. Okay, um... Daily breakdowns. Every day I'm, I'm going wild on twitter.com. Thank you for the save your canvas. I literally just saved, so hold on, wait. I have to do something. Do something that lets me save again. Let me in here. What I might do is bring like this side down. So if I like, grab like from here? Maybe? And then bring like this side up. Would be a little more dramatic about it. Okay. I think that works. I could move the back as well, but maybe something like that is doable. Now I can save. We're vibing, we're vibing, we're vibing, we're no longer calling me out. Hello Shabana, welcome in. How pain I work today? Oh, no. Oh my god, Blaze, that emote is so cute. 5.5 hours, but it's something. Well. Your avatar is so pretty. Thank you. I'm literally just vibing because I'm avoiding having to do the rest of this. My god. From Keishen's channel, yeah, uh, Mako drew that emote actually. Yeah, Mako's credited. I like, I like give a shout out maybe. A shout out, Mako. Mako makes good emotes. There you go. There's Mako. Mako made that emote in particular. I'm gonna have to make commands for all my kids actually. What should Beninis say? Dear bunnies? Okay, let me see. And I said for their avatar. Exclamation point Chad. Wait, that's a good idea. I should do that. Wait, stream notes. I should do that. Wait. Exclamation point Chad for Bunny. Wait, okay. I like the chat stream tag. Slubby Wubby. Tokyo Driftin', the nice boy. Hi Salem. Salem, thank you for the nine months. Oh my god. The nine months? What on earth? Time is not real. Anyway, exclamation point Chad. There we go. There we go. Bunny has a command now. Oh, hell yeah, yeah. I'll make one for all my kids eventually. That was just exclamation point Chad. I was like, wait, that's Big Brain. Drag like some of these down. I think like, yeah, I'll take those three. Oh god, not that, not like that. Not what I was attempting to do. Can I maybe take these four? And move them down. And then bring this one back up so it's not clipping. Bunny is Chad. Bunny is Chad. Bunny will appreciate, yes. My god. Oh! Hi Sugoi. Who's Bunny? Bunny is one of my VTuber kids. I rigged Bu- I rigged her model. I did her rigging. She was one of my first VTuber kids that I ever rigged. And she is a very Chad bunny. She's a bunny corn. Restream, woo, hi Zora, welcome in. Did I not have my jacket? I was not paying attention. Oh my god, Keishen's voice. I see I've converted someone. Another convert. I see I'm causing problems. Keishen A is a mark confirmed. I fucking wish he would. Dude, I keep, I say it as a, I keep saying it as a joke where I'm like, haha, if you did voice stuff, I would have no money. I would spend all my money, but it's not really a joke. Yes, thank you. Thank you for shanubis. Thank you. It is no longer a joke. It was a joke at first and now it's no longer a joke. Now I am just actually struggling. Oh, time to stand. Spam shanubis, I have to stand. I am no longer standing. I am allowed to sit down again. There we go. Thank you. Thank you for shanubis. Thank you. Thank you. In this house, we praise the shanubis. Yeah, in this house, I have a problem. It's okay, I can make us, I can make song because I think you might like them. Actually, no, at the risk of getting DMCA'd. I just play Taki on here because it won't get me bonked. I can't go over the cereal gif? Do you like it? Do you like the cereal gif? I think it encapsures my vibes pretty well. Need these four. Instead, we bonk Bui. I see how it is. I feel like the bonks have been aggressive today. I feel like, I feel like there's been a lot more bonks than standard today. I should probably stop playing no, no music on stream. Yeah, yeah, Sugoi. I'd be in your streams and I'm like, oh, I know all this music, but I would not play this on stream. Unless I fucking unlist all my VODs, I guess. OMG, hello Mura. Hi Z, welcome in, yo. Welcome in, welcome in. Okay, I'm trying to decide how I wanna do with the, uh, the, 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 the belts. I forgot what they were called for a second. Kissy, I can do that. One second. Alright, let me give you a little kissy. Let me get in here. Hi. There you go. Floppy belts. Yeah, they're gonna have physics, but uh, right now I'm just trying to make it look like he is bending down. That is the goal. Another one, Sugoi. Oh my god. There you go. No! Don't start hitting me. No. What the heck? What the heck? How you got ask me for a kiss and then throw shit at me? And it was a gnome. I can't have nice things here. Got him. What the heck? Look at Salem, Salem's being so nice to me right now. I wanna bonk, but it says out of stock because it's on a cooldown. So that people cannot spam it the entire stream. Thank you Salem. Let me, um, open, open this, but just see how far we got. It's mine, don't touch it, goose. Are you claiming the, the fucking bonk button? Are you claiming the bonk button as your own now? I think it's getting there. I still have to do, um, the rest of his body, but like the upper body. I think I might actually bring like the whole bottom of these up a little. I think. Makes sense. Me when I look down. Sugoi's bonk now, no! That wouldn't even go through. I wasn't paying attention. I swear, sometimes they don't. Sheppy's looking down. We're getting there, look. Look, it's starting to look like it, right? Okay? He is looking directly at his necklace. Alright, I have and I, I have some thoughts after looking at that in there. I wanna take, uh, I'm gonna use my pen actually. Dammit, it's a kissy. I'm sorry! There you go. Here, 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 okay. Okay, so if I grab their lasso and go like here, oh, I fucked that up. Like that. Why is there a middle one? I didn't- Why is there a middle one? I didn't want the middle one. Can I get like... That. Okay. Oh, but it... Where? Oh, I can only do it with this. That's kind of annoying. But um, not the end of the world, I guess. How about we do this? That should be fine. Oh my god. And I am reverb. Give me a second. My UBA is Tokyo Drifted. Benashboma orange juice. Benashboma orange juice. Okay, let me do this. That, maybe? Hey Mura, still streaming early, I see. Yes, I am, I am. Hi Bunny! Hi Bonzai, welcome in! Alright, let me get in the tunnel. I'm in the tunnel. I'm in the tunnel, morning streamer, yes. Her nose is mine! A morning streamer. A morning streamer until October. Then I will stream at more times, probably. I used to stream Tuesday, Thursday? I'm thinking about bringing back Thursday streams, but those are gonna be like the PM stream. Like, that's gonna be the nighttime stream. Day on Thursdays. How's that look? About like, more what I am imagining? See, that looks more like what I'm imagining, I think. Might even bring... After-hours brew on Thursday. I'm thinking that. You look down. I'm gonna miss Thursdays, but I will be lurking. I will... There is no way. Those are my anime nights. Oh my god. Well, can't do anything about that. Should be bowing. Wow. Okay! Aight! Aight, I see how it is. Anime without crazy. Oh my god. They'll be doing a little ragdoll. Listen, he, he's turning and we're getting the down. I'd like to also get the up eventually. So many bonks today, yeah. I'm getting beat the fuck up today for no reason. I don't even think I've done anything particularly beat-worthy. Particularly... That calls for this. It's a cheap ragdoll bounce! I could hear it. I saw that tweet. You saw nothing. What tweet? What are you talking about? Reap that trick, no! Nooo! Oh god! You saw nothing. You saw nothing on twitter.com. Smile. Would you consider bonk-worthy out of curiosity? I don't know. Like, when I'm actively mean sometimes? I feel like that's bonk-worthy. Now I have to check your Twitter to see? Oh no. Listen, there is nothing on twitter.com worthy of looking at right now. Preheat oven to 350 degrees Fahrenheit. Correct. Don't forget. Yeah, Mura called me ugly. What? No, I didn't! What? Oh, so now we're just lying. Now we're just lying in chat. Call my baguette cheese, what? Stop! I did not say any of that. This is not true. I am being framed. I am being framed. Mura stole my first board, not clickbait. Sugoi, I'm gonna fight. Sugoi, I'm going to throw hands. We're gonna, we're gonna meet in the parking lot and throw hands. That's what's about to happen. Mura said I'm not aware to watch her stream, so she took my glasses. How can this material girl gamer do this? Exactly, a material girl! A material girl. I would never. I'm chilling. I'm vibing. Can I? Can I select? I thought I could select like, specific ones with the lasso tool and then move them all, is the thing. Oh, okay, I can. Okay. Hi. Material girl. Find your noses back. Thank you. I will hydrate. Nice. Other side as well. Oh, grab. I am being bullied! I am being bullied. I am, everyone's being very mean to me. I am no longer having a good day. Everyone's being so mean to me. For no reason. Hello Echo, welcome in! Good morning. You deserve it. You stole the batteries from the controller? Wait, how? How did I do this? How did I do this? We're not even in the same timezone. How do they go? I feel like I'm being targeted. Mura took all the erasers off my pencils, yeah. You look at my teeth, right? I ate them. I eated the erasers off your pencils. I'm sorry, I chewed them all off. Hairspray detected, kneecaps collected. I like that. Mura dropped my boba down the drain. Now, I wouldn't do that. And you know why I wouldn't do that? Don't pour boba pearls down the drain because that is a lot for the garbage disposal. You should pour out the drink and then throw away the pearls if you don't want them. Mura took my heart? Oh my god. You don't waste boba. Exactly. I want boba. There's no good boba places near me. It makes me sad. I want a good boba place, but there are none. There are none near me. Maybe I'll just leave this as is for now. Gotta wait until 12:30 for my boba place to open? God. You reminded me I was gonna treat myself to boba this morning! Did you forget? Oh no. I got boba like five minutes before going to a museum and I had to throw it away because no food or drink was allowed? I would've just stood outside! Open your own boba shop, easy solution. Making boba, actually, today. I bought some yesterday, yo. Kind of a vibe. I'm trying to find a very specific pose for an hour and I want to cry. I'm sorry. Oh my god, can I do something else? Can I do anything else other than this? I don't want to work on the, the body angles anymore. My brain's shutting down. You prefer tea or coffee? Ooh, probably tea. Probably tea. Mura snapped all my pencils! Wha- What are these oddly specific scenarios, Sugoi? Sugoi, is this like, are you telling me something? Do you want me to do something? Been so long since I had boba. I had like a chai latte boba or something last time. It was wonderful. I want that. Hazel nut boba? I've never had that. There was a boba, boba place near my campus that had this very specific like... Um, oh, what the fuck was it? It was like a taro. It was a taro like Oreo boba thing. And I was losing my mind over it. I want it again. And I can never have it again because I no longer live near there. I'm just giving reasons to bonk? Stop giving people reasons to bonk! Stop it! Oh, did you um, did you set up kabonk, Sugoi? Did you figure it out? Want some matcha right now? Ask them to politely mail it to you, please! That I have to fucking drive. I haven't touched it. Well... Okay. I'll try it right now. Wow, I reminded you. My god. I think I want to bring those corners down. I don't know where they are. Jacket collar, not that one. The smaller ones. These ones, okay. Bring the edge of it down. Y-yes. That seems okay. Oh, would it be cool if Sugoi taught Mura how to get headpats? That's true! Sugoi does have the headpat thing. How do I do that? I don't know how to do that. Going back there and then rob the store for all its bobas right off the trip as a business expense, nothing but pure profit. Oh, your brain is huge. Let me see. Where is... There's something bothering me about the shoulders now. I might just need to move the arms down too. Maybe that's it then? Oh. Oh, I know what's bothering me. I see the issue. Hey mate. Think this is wider? Yo, welcome in! Welcome in, welcome in. Howdy. Oh, maybe I should have moved this one. Well, we'll see. I will deal with the consequences of my actions. If I put it there, maybe. Maybe that's okay. Every computer chair should be able to transform into a little bed. So true. I was trying really hard to find a computer chair that had a footrest. And I couldn't find one that I wanted. And I was sad, so I did not get my footrest. Mavix has one. Is it like $3 million? No. But now I already bought a new chair, so it'll be a second till I get another one. Pricey but nice. I believe it. It's under 1K. I mean, that's promising. When I have this like $500, that's doable. Not right now, but doable. Okay. I think that's fine. I think that's fine. I think that's fine. If they give for the hydrate and hint stretch to save my canvas and stuff, I will save. I will drink water. I'll do all those things. What is happening? Is it bothering me now? It's still bothering me now? These, I think they need to be either higher or lower. Like, they're in the same spot and that's what's bothering me. They need to be either higher or lower. Which way, which way? That is the wrong one. I wanted these two. Try making them lower. Yeah, kinda like that. I'm being very picky for this thing that's going to just have physics on it and look fine anyways. Oh, it's okay. Look at him go. Wow, look at him go. Look at him go. He's going. Okay, give me these belts finally. I have been avoiding these belts. Been actively avoiding them. What I might do... This might be a bad idea, but I want a temporary warp on these, actually. I love the metal shine, yo. Thank you. I gave him some shinies. I'm gonna fucking regret this, but I want, I think it might be the move. It might be easier to do it like this. We'll see. Oh, that was not in a straight line and the slide is... The fuck? Let me just move this in. Bring that in. And hopefully, nothing else gets fucked up. Just came across you guys. Your model's amazing. Thank you! Oh my god. Welcome in! Just a little. I don't even think I need to do this much. This, this is gonna have physics too. Okay, and then this one, temporary warp. This way. This way, maybe like a little. We'll go with that and then... We'll go with that, and then... Both of these. Grab like all of these, and go down a little. Okay. Sure. I think that's fine, I think we can work with that. Just a little. Just a very small amount of belt movement for now. A little. I'm just trying my best not to mess too many things up. And then I have to figure out how to do the rest of the body. That's gonna be painful. Where is his shirt? Why is like the head part open? I don't need that. I don't need this entire rotation. Where art thou? Oh wait, it's at the bottom, isn't it? No, it's not, it's right here. Gonna bring this down a little. Sure. Back it side. Where the other one? Down here. Okay. Move it down. Just a little. I like the X and Y on this. I don't, I mean the Y on this, I don't think I need to do nearly as much as I did for the X. Oh, but the... I feel like this should go up. I feel like that makes sense in my brain. Nevermind, I changed my mind instantly. And... Where's the big deformer on the belt, because I'm not... Oh my god, Chibi! Hi, Chibi, welcome in! That looks amazing, thank you, I'm trying. I'm trying, I'm about to check and see how it looks again. In movement. But yeah, hello, hello, and hello, Hikari, welcome in, welcome in, welcome in. Move that belt down. Move the belt down, and I need to move the legs down. Does this seem thing, this looks great? Thank you! Oh, my god. Open this a little. Barely any. I don't think I need to do that much. I can't have rotation deformers in there because they, they're gonna have their own thing. But I'm just, ooh, it's time to stand again! Time for me to stand, enjoy some music while I walk around. Okay. And we are back. Back to sitting for another 30 minutes. Hello, we do be standing. I be standing. We be trying to stretch my legs. Make sure y'all hydrate, of course. Standing time, and standing time, those emotes! Those are really good. Using your timers as a reminder to stand up and stretch while I animate, so thanks, yo! If it's helpful, it's helpful. My cute little timer cubes. I have a pink and a black one. Oh my god. Jelly, hi Jelly! Welcome in, welcome in. Oh, that thirsty mode I need. I stay thirsty, same. Oh, did I miss anything? I'm sure you did, it doesn't got my house paper sketching though. Oh my gosh. But yeah, um, that's what I was gonna do, here. Uh, let's look at this a little. Live 2D? Don't start acting up, please, let me save. Please, no, start acting, uh, that is not nice. That would be a not nice it up. To see how we're looking. Slowly but surely, he is moving down now. I think I am gonna pull the cape back down instead. What I remember from doing body corners on KUSH's models, that the body corners are actually easier than the face, so hopefully, I can do the up as well, we can be clear with that for now. Real thirst hours, I just woke up, my body is so heavy. Good morning! Look at his tail. Look at his silly little tail. I wanted to do his ears. I was considering doing his ears, but I might save that for Tuesday. Uh, work, work. Real moist hours. Good critical hydrate, yeah. When these models come to life makes me happy, well, art in general makes me happy. I'm having a time. Having a time right now. Trying to decide how I want to do. I should probably set up deformers for his shoes and stuff now. I've been avoiding it, but I should probably go ahead and do it. Because I did want to put physics on these, but I'm thinking I might just do those on the deformers directly in this case. Why is there a prehe- how into 350 degrees Fahrenheit tag? Oh, you know. Just so you know, cuz we're making bread. It's just there so you're reminded. Don't forget to preheat your ovens. It's because Twitch cleared my tags again, and I was mad about it, so I was like, here's some more. I wanna think of more tags, more nonsense tags. Cuz that's the optimal heat for cooking models, it says on the packaging. So true, Sheppy, so true. He is being baked into bread right now. Okay, I'm gonna put... I'm gonna start putting some more. Why are you a 6 and a 10? Don't do that, actually. That's gonna cause problems if I do that. Let's give you less than that. Baking live 2D children with love, Mura. Yes, we are cooking. We are baking the children. And then these three belts, I wanted to have a little bit of physics on. But I'm thinking I'm gonna do it on just the meshes themselves. Well, if I want them separated though, is the thing. Honestly, I'd probably only do a Y. Yeah, okay, I don't think I need. We are baking the children, love Mura 2022. So true, so true. I is back, welcome back, Kyu, welcome back. I am making so many warp deformers. This model is becoming thick. I didn't even rename that one. Here we go. Okay, so all these in leg, I did not mean to lock that in here. So we take all of these in here. Okay. And put, no, not the upper leg, just this. We're gonna make a big deformer. There we go. So now there's those two. Perfect. Hello, Raina, welcome in, uh, welcome in. The thicker the better. This model's becoming heavy. That's okay. It's okay, if any problems arise in the future, he can be compressed. So I'm gonna try this on like, one leg. Oh, can I have the other one, please? Thank you. I don't know if this is gonna work how I want it to work. What would be the best way to do this? Am I, it says temporary path? Hmm, maybe not. I'm feeling very fuck-it-wee-ball right now. I'm trying to scream, but I'm dummy thick. Compress thickness, yeah. You can, um, compress the textures on live 2D models so that they are a little less heavy, if you really need to. That's how Spats got her modeled, so that she could get imported on her phone. Tis a mood, tis a mood indeed. I don't know if this is gonna work. This might just look weird, I'll try it though. And then this one. Might just not do anything. I don't think it's necessary, actually. You know what I might try, actually? I have an idea now. Yeah, let me do this. With this back. Wait a second. Mall's so cool, thank you, oh my god. Trying to talk to stream, but the sound of clapping is taking over the mic. Sorry, it's my cheeks. Waiting for the day I can audibly clap my model's cheeks. How would, there's like, plugins for VTube Studio to trigger audio, like on hotkey, or like on, like expression and shit like that? So I'm pretty sure someone's come up with this idea before. Gives you Zelda? Must be the outfit, maybe? Listen, I'm just saying that it's probably possible. I'm just saying that hypothetically speaking. Jelly, go back to sleep! I might do. Is just compresses legs, and like not really do anything else. Not back to sleep, Jelly, go back to sleep. Vtuber not, cheektuber! How to get banned from Twitch? Here, let me make the... Warp deformers on this one too. Claps when laughing, awful, awful! Really darling wife, hi, Errol, hello, my husband, how are you doing? Happy Sunday, it's Sunday, I'm chilling. I think it's possible you, just using VR chat, oh, I don't wanna think about that. I don't wanna think about the things that be going on in VR chat. Standing ovation with a surprise! Powerful, yo! How goes the funny fox, man? I can show you, give me a second, I'm making more warp deformers. School is gross truth. Let me show you his tail, let me show you his tail. So we're working on the down angle on the body now, here, let me move him to the side. Uh, working on the down angle to the body, but he has his tail, his tail's swishy. His tail be swishy. I'm trying to decide what I wanna, how I wanna do his legs. Sweet, yeah. I'm being indecisive as per usual. Got the swishes. So I'm working on other things until I figure it out. I might just, again, ignore his legs and just continue to do the upper body and nothing else. Might be more fun that way. His tail swishies. Wow, oh god, I broke it. That was me. Legs, what legs? Yeah, just closing my eyes. They're not there right now. I'll come back on Tuesday and the legs will be done because I'll finally figure out what I want to do with them. I was trying to do that last night, but I was too sleepy. But yeah, he got his X turn is pretty much done. My guy, he is getting there. Yo, baby. Look at him. You're starting to get like the, you see how it's like dodging the corners? I love it when that happens. Alright. Let's start angle Y instead. I mean, the up angle. We've been doing angle Y, but like, the up angle specifically instead. It feels more fun than continuing to try and do this. A thing about, I might need the reference for this one, actually. I'm gonna open the example model. There's a way to make the shoulders look like they're going back, you know? I'm gonna open the reference for this one. You made the vibes of that one anime character that everyone subs for. That could be literally anyone. That could be literally anyone. Alright, uh, open example. There you go. Main character energy? I love that for him. Where's the body? Body angles physics, okay, Y. Yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, okay, okay. This is like the one case where it actually rotate the arms, too. So let's start with, uh... We're gonna move his head up slightly first, I think, with his neck. Heart now. Arms, 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 arms. No, no, no. Not here either. Where's the one I'm looking for? It's one of these ones, this one? Position, there we go. Okay. Gonna move this up a little. And... I'm going to resize this a little, which is going to look suspect, but hold on. A little bit more. Hate doing this part. Hate doing this part, cause it's easy to fuck it up, and then I have to undo it. Like, barely any. Just a little. It's funny. I understand why. But it still bothers me. Okay, so now... Need the main deformer. You. Marriage, but the main character, retro RPG-based anime like Sword Fight Online. Oh my god, are you okay with fan art drawn of you? Yeah. Sure. Sure, I do not mind fan art. Uh, I'm gonna take... This middle section. I'm gonna do... This to him. And to move him up a little. Yes, I'm gonna take this middle section and do this. I'm gonna take this upper section and do this. Are you okay with being turned into a slime? It wouldn't be the first time it happened. Hirota. This is literally all I can draw, to be honest. I mean, sure. Wait, what was the first time? Somewhere in my files. Wait, I bet I can find it. What is this? Oh, that is the alt design I have. That is my hot boy form. Hold on. I have Bunny drew me as a slime, or like, as a blob or something one time. I have to find where it is, though. Me when masculine, Mira. That me. But as a hot guy. One day he will exist as a live 2D model. I want him to exist. Yes, this. This. Bunny drew this. Bunny drew this one. It's adorable. Yeah, Bunny made me a little creature. But yeah, it's cute. It's squishy. Yeah, I like it. I'm gonna grab his arms. I'm gonna once again grip his arms, and we're gonna rotate those in... By the same amount of degree. Oh wait, I didn't freeze these. Let me freeze both these. Alright, cool. So I can have like a whole number to work with. There we go. Can bring his... Shoulders should be straighter. I might bring them up a little? Maybe. Maybe, or maybe down a little. I don't know. Chad, thank you for exclamation point chat. Yeah, there's Bunny. Bunny's my Vtuber kid. Oh, I see like, straight fucking clipping, which is fine. We love Bunny. We love Bunny. I care Bunny. Okay, I think I can move his belt up with this. In here. See, I distinctly remembered the up angle being like, way easier than the down angle. Like, it's already almost there. Pretty good news? What's up? That looks like my tracking phone that both doesn't give me anxiety and actually lets it charge while I use it. Wow, good job. I have my phone set up to charge while I use it as well, and I still forget to make it charge sometimes. And I still forget. It hasn't died on me during a stream yet. Yet. Before it was plugged directly into my PC. I did not charge it fast enough. I see. Alright, I think we can do... Shoulder. The cape. Cape, give me the cape. Why are you base level editing 3? What is happening? Hello, Mouse, welcome in. Using JQ clip on desk arm that was too bulky, um, this little power stand plugged directly into power. It's powerful now. It is stronger now. Why does it keep resetting? Sorry, I'll be combo. Oh well. I can make memes? You can make memes? Gifts even? That's absolutely wild. Yo. I'm gonna bring the sides in. I should do that. These four. It's okay if the back clips through. Okay, and then let me select one at a time. I can grab this side. Good morning, Mira. Good morning, chat. Hope everyone's doing well this morning. Good morning, Jaylove, welcome in. Hey, Mira, haven't seen you in a bit. Glad to catch your stream again. Sabed, Sabed, welcome in. Welcome in, welcome in. We're just getting these angles done. Live 2D is about to fight me. Oh no, not again, not again. Yes, I cannot be stopped. DNA of the soul, so true. Good morning. Sir, welcome in. Live 2D calm down, please. Please. Please, I am trying so hard here. How are we looking now? Now that has a little bit of up, like, do its bounce back thing? Yeah, 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 it is. I might make his arms go out on the down angle now, cause now that they go in on the up angle, I feel inclined. I feel inclined to do that. You what? This model's looks so good. Thank you. Live 2D, I just wanna talk. Yeah, I'm working on digital OC drawing for a good friend of mine. She streams on here. Nice. I love doing friend art. I love doing friend art. I wish I had more time to do friend art. So happy, excited for Sheppy. Sheppy is happening. Like, he's looking alright, actually. Pleasantly surprised. Thought a lot more things would go wrong. I say that, and then we get to the physics. Also wish free more free time. Free more free time. I'm really busy. I was really busy this month in particular. Um, next month I will not take as many commissions, so hopefully we'll be better. The 2D is coming together. If I zoom out, you can see his tail swishies. His tail swishy. Need to make it move in adjustment with the X. Doesn't bother me that it's not. But yeah, we're getting there. Look at his body disconnect. Anyway, let me fix that. Let me fix that. His body is fucking leaving. Sueing live 2D art stream. By the way, Mira, how much do you charge for a 2D character like this? If I do exclamation point coms. That second link will tell you all my live 2D process, pricing. That is how you speak English, smile. Yeah, I'm gonna make his arms move out on the down angle. It's bothering me now that they're the same. Thank you for the care package. Thank you. Oh, I just moved that somewhere. I shouldn't have. Alright. Oh, it's time to stand again, actually. So we're gonna stand instead. Stand up. Let's go. One minute. Okay. Sitting time. There we go. Back to sitting time. I love those so much. I'm literally about to sub to Kuma for those emotes. Oh, I am sub to Kuma, wait! I have a gift sub, apparently. Yo, I can stand and sit! I feel like my cat... Feel like my cat is going to kill me. He's staring at me any moment, could lead to a funeral. I mean, that's just typical cat behavior. Anyway, what was I doing? I was angling his arms inward. We're gonna do 3. Negative 3. And then the other one. Positive 3. That is 30. Uh, didn't want that. Wanted 3. It looks like he's gonna get me. Pato, yes. A pose for dominance. It looks like he's like, about to get me. Wah. Me when I stand. Me when I stand. Need to figure out how I wanna do the rest of the shoulder things. But... Look at him. He's going. Not that emote. Feel like I might even try and bring this up higher. Maybe. Well, maybe not. I feel like it's a good amount right now. It's a good amount of up and down when you think about how close the model's gonna be on the screen most of the time. Not gonna lie, this is me when I stand. He stands it up, apparently. Alright. Oh, I love that one. That's a good one. Thinking about... Or this, the breathing mark, this, this... Thinking about grabbing... Like, these middle ones? Nah, I need like the fourth one. Up a little bit more. That might be too much. Let me see. Let me think. Maybe it's fine. Hellooo, DigitalGo, welcome in! Hi! We're chilling, we're just checking, checking how things are moving. When you get a cat, your soul is entitled to them. Say goodbye to legs and arms, your cat will cut them off. That's true. It's just how it is, I'm sorry. Sheppy, wait, no, don't stand up, I'm sorry, I won't bump into you again! Wait, Sheppy, no! Sheppy! Nooo, Sheppy! Yeah, he's schmoovin'. He's schmoovin'. We're getting there. I need his body Z in here eventually. That's when it's gonna be real schmoovin'. When you get the Z angle in, you start swaying back and forth! Wah! Wah! Wah 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 wah. I'm getting distracted! Okay, uh, to the cape. Where's the clappage movement? I am sorry! I did not draw Sheppy with titty physics in mind. I'm sorry! I did not do that with this one! Does anyone have a weird fear? I have fear of electric stairs slash escalators? I don't, I can't think of any like, odd ones. Like, all my fears are pretty standard. Like, I don't like bugs. They're all like, pretty average. Another referring to cheek clappage? I don't know how that would work on this model. It would just be, you'd have to be using your imagination for the cheek clappage. Now, worst case, they break and become stairs. It's true. All clappage, every clappage. Okay, thank you Tiger, for the clarification. That's right, all of them count! Feel like I can drag this down. And now I can fix the back of it, as well. It'd be easier to do it like this, hold on. Let me just grab this. Put it behind it. Ooh, actually... I just had another idea. This might look better, wait. This might work better. I grab... Ease... Go up. Up this way. Okay. Grab these top ones, bring those back down, cuz they don't need to be that high up, they can be a little higher. Okay? Okay, and then, if I grab the... Nope, not all those! My god! And pull this down. And then just get the edges... Get the corners to line up. Ahaha, 3D effect! Ahaha, tee hee! Wah! Maybe I'll become a clappable animator, a clappage animator, do it! Get the sound lined up to make the clappage sounds like an osu beatback! Oh no, don't do that! Osu cheekback! I hate it here, actually. Yeah, there we go. And I just need to do the belts. They have not... I didn't do the belt on the up angle at all. Ease... Actually, I'm honestly like, about to just do this, and then just move it up. Do this. Just also move it up. Maybe move them, maybe I'll angle them in a bit. But that's it. Or out? Out a bit, might make more sense, maybe? In this case? Yes, I think. Yes, I am thinking that is fine. Let's do that. See that on the other side. Oh, that's not what I wanted. Okay! We're anti-escalators now? Oh my god. The boba place will no longer be safe in 14 minutes! Proper's getting boba! I want boba! Osu map, but that one meme that's like, "Why is everyone so mean to me?" The butt cheek moves a tie with the beat! I know exactly what you're talking about! Awful! Oh! Oh my god, is that a raid? Is that a raid? Yo, welcome! Welcome in raiders! Hi Flyer! Hello, let me give you a shoutout. Let me give a little shoutout. Oh shit! Are you a cutie? Am I a cutie? Am I the cutie? Oh my god! Hi! Oh! I feel loved right now! Welcome in raiders! Flyer MoonredPog, yeah! You're the biggest cutie, I'm vibing! I'm just here. Thank you, shoutout. You're also doing art, and thank you for all the follows, oh my goodness! Hi raiders, hi! Uh, my name is Bree. Love Murra. You can call me Bree, you can call me Love, you can call me Murra, you can call me your wife! We're working on live 2D model art today. Well, not art, but we're doing some rigging. I already did the art in previous streams. I hope you had a good art stream, what were you working on? Oh my goodness! Oh my god, I'm in love with this face, face sparkles on you, thank you! Hi! Wife! Thank you! Thank you for all the follows, goodness gracious! I really appreciate the raid! It always beautiful, oh Flyer, thank you! You're so pretty, love Murra, maybe I even love shy! Oh my goodness, who threw something at me? But yeah, I hope you had a good stream! Dear Flyer and anyone else coming across from the raid, there is no obligation to stay in chat here, we vibe only, so if you have to skedaddle after your stream, please feel free, don't feel obligated to stay. Okay? Oh my god! They're throwing things at me, I need to get away from the screen! You're all so cute, thank you! Oh my god, and there goes the violence. We vibe, only real, real, we be vibing! That's what we do here. Um, right now, I'm trying to do these up and down angles on his body. Here, let me open the... Physics sim 1 settings, let me take a peek. Mz, you have pretty good vibes, so thank you! Vib- vibrance? Vibrance, the sparkle on your face is so beautiful, oh my god, I want them! Oh my god, here. Here's Sheppy so far. We got his, I did his tail last night, and we've been working on like his body angles, right? There's a side, goes side to side, and he goes up and down now. Which, I think I might have moved those belts... A little too much? Maybe not. I don't know. They're gonna have physics, maybe it won't matter. Yeah. We're getting there. The fox boy is amazing, oh my god, thank you, yeah, he's our, our local foxy boy. Oh my god! Real ultimate cutie! Ah! Thank you for the bits! As long as the belts don't hit his face, it's fine. So true, actually. Yeah, we're, we're good. We're good. Cutie alert, ahhh! I will scream! Not actually, she had one single glitter on all of your children, just like how it's infectious Ira. I only do the glitter if I am asked. Sheppy doesn't have glitter, he has reflections instead. He has like a bunch of metal reflections. That's his charm point. And I still need to figure out how I wanna do it on the necklace. Dude, Riggy is actually amazing, thank you! I think he's looking alright so far. What I'm gonna do is body corners, so I can export... Another work in progress type beat. Wah! Wah! We have escalators, we have escalators, we like stairs and elevators, oh my god! So yeah, I'm just looking at this and trying to decide if I wanna change anything else right now. I go lurking your stream, thank you for your art, thank you again for the raid, I appreciate it. Yeah, have a good lurk! Have a nice stream, everyone, kiss ya, yes, thank you, thank you, thank you! You have a nice day! Trying to decide if his belts... Are in fact moving too far out. I feel like I'm wrong. Yeah, I'm gonna leave him. I'm not gonna fix him, I'm not gonna change it. I'm gonna leave it as is, and... Deal with the consequences of my actions for once in my life. I think it looks okay. What I do need to figure out is how I wanna do the rest of the body. Yo, what? My model still blinking the physics menu? Oh, okay, so that is actually something you have to enable. Here, let me, let me see if I can find it again. I believe it's under modeling. Uh, but, but, uh... Nah, where is it? I don't remember where it is. I don't remember where it is. I have to find it. Every time I started a new model, I have to find this and turn this shit on. It's in show, but even if I turn it on, it doesn't blink? Really? I thought it was another thing, I thought it was somewhere over here. Um... It's like a se- no... This, this, parameter setting for eye blinking and lip sync, it's this. And you have to go in here, and you have to check all the eye ones... For... Open and smile, this is what it is. I found it, that's where it is. It's modeling... Fucking, it's modeling... Parameter... Settings for eye blinking and lip sync, and then you check all those boxes. There you go. It always bothers me how it's not on by default, too. You know what, I'm a cave and try and make a model just as a fun project? Good luck! Good luck, use YouTube. I would just link it to the mouse, oh why I make it blink manually, that is so... Nah! We're trying to learn to rig, and I remember it was at that moment, my brain stopped working! God, that's too real. Yeah. We're rigging, and he does not even have like any of his major physics, I'm just doing his body physics and nothing else until... I can get to his clothes and stuff. Why is that not by default, though? I don't know! I remember being like, why doesn't my model blink in here? And like having to Google it, and like it took me forever to figure out what it was! I'm addicted to rigging, I finished my model, feels like my brain isn't slow now. Slow mode! God! There's just so many buttons, I'd be scared to click the wrong thing. Listen, if I mess something up, I'mma press Ctrl-Z. And hope that that fixes it. Okay, let me in here. I want to bring... That's the front. I want the side. There we go. Oh, I did already do this kind of, okay, that's what I was wondering. And go down, I want it to go up a little. I'll take it from the bottom, and just go like this. Move this whole thing up, and then we need to move the belt group. Not that, but um, the cross one, the cross belt group. Let me in here. Let me in here, I scrolled past it like 3 times, I think. There it is. Move this up. Eh, sure? No, that's just that rotation deform, nevermind. I was confused for a second. Oh, also Murra, I finally got mouth form and open sorted, gonna try and figure tongue out and cheek puffs another day, you got this! You got this proper! Ctrl-Z saves lives, Ctrl-Z is my bestie, it's so true! There's still lore make panic, and I will... I will write lore in Google Docs just because I can. I mean, why not? I need to write down my lore, that's cuz I keep changing it. Jumped up and sliced, opened all the way down my arm, that's so rude! That's so rude! Bite the cat, no! People out here learning how to art, and I'm just talking about cheeks? I mean, valid, I guess. Valid, I guess, cheeks are important. Okay. Cheeks are your art form tiger? Makes sense. Where is... Oh wait, I know where that is, it's all the way at the bottom. You... This... Grab this... Maybe like the center too, actually. And then I have to actually move the legs... Which I actively been avoiding. Oh, I didn't put these in their one big deformer, did I? I didn't, let me do that. Oops! Under... R... Y... There we go. Anyway, uh, this one. Move these. Gonna move them both up. Okay. Yeah, I'll figure out the leg stepping thing, what I wanna do with it off stream. I think it'd be easier on my brain. Look at that. Oh shit, look at that breaking weight. You see that? Oh, cuz I didn't do anything for the death. Oh, that was me. That was because of me. I did that. Cassie! I do all the fun mouth stuff. I only have webcam tracking. When in doubt, you can do cheek puffs and tongue out on a toggle. That's what I'm gonna do for Sheppy. Sheppy is also webcam tracking. I put all the mouth stuff in there anyways for the showcase. But um, yeah. I snarf. Hello, hello. Butter biscuit, baby nugget. Hello Cassie, my beloved. And good morning, shout and welcome in! Hi! Yeah, I got tongue out toggle, but I just wanna do mouth wiggle so bad. I feel like it's like literally a matter of time before there's like another tracking update type thing and they're like, haha, here's improved webcam tracking. I'm like, yep. As I expected. Um, oh, I need to fix his legs. I fucked up his legs. That's what I did. You want to know how to make Mura twitch? What? Say Uno three times. Oh no, we're not playing Uno. We will never do that. I can't play Uno cuz I'll start crying. I need to move this one down. That's bothering me. Where the shading just completely fucking vanishes? Yeah, I think it'd be possible to do with webcam. I don't know. We'll see what happens, basically. If it has something to do some before end of year, we'll see. Anything can happen. I haven't do channel VTuber cross. So, so darn scary the rigging. Oh my god. Aloha, welcome in. If I could feed my ego for more, like same mouth track is pretty poggers for webcam tracking. Yeah, that's another thing. It's really like I don't dislike any form of via fucking VTube Studio tracking. Like, you can compromise with any of them. You just have to know how to set up your mouth and adjust the settings. Like you can make all of them pretty okay. It's the reason why I have literally all three. I have an Android phone as my actual phone. I have an iPhone for tracking and I have a webcam. It's so I can do whatever is necessary. Let the shadow go up, but maybe, maybe I put like too far up. Yeah, maybe just a little bit less. Maybe that's okay. Then it's the other way. Progressively, I'm all art for a friend. I just wanna skip to the rigging part. What a mood. Think he even got iPhone helps for checking. Because I do commissions, I literally have all three. That's the main reason I have all three is for commissions, so I can work with whatever anyone has. So she had super duper stylized eyes with chalky lashes at all. Yeah. I was actually really close to getting an old iPhone X for tracking, but then all the tracking issues popped up and I don't know if they've been fixed yet. That's another thing, yeah. Whatever fucking update broke all the iPhone tracking. I forgot about that cuz I never updated. I completely forgot about that. Is it fixed now? Okay. But that was funny for a second. I just really enjoy rigging. I really like the process where I can get lost in the moment. World fades away, nothing but some good tunes and maybe 12 hours of work. That is me. I can sit here for like six hours straight if I really wanted to. A good iPhone. Eventually groceries have been kicking my butt. Groceries are more important. They're more important. Up and down and up and down and up and down and his legs don't look too weird anymore. I didn't fucking broke that for a second. Side to side and side to side. Jackie Mura, I've already had a friend try and help me, but one, is it possible to use an iPhone with no face ID slash AR kit too? How do you flip the VTube Studio camera? On iPhone? No, the only reason people buy iPhones for face tracking is because of the AR kit thing. Like it's because they have that, that people get the iPhone tracking. That is the reason why. I don't know if like you get like an iPhone that's like older than that, that doesn't have it. I have no idea if that would work. Don't tell Siri I'd be over here. Up and down and up and down. Thank you. Anything before 10 doesn't work with Wadayo, I don't think. Okay, yeah. Thank you, Zuchi. Like Wadayo will simply not do anything. Oh, it is time to stand again. Time to stand. One minute. Here, let me zoom out so you can look at his swishy tail while I stand. Wah. No longer standing. That's a sitting. Me with a pretty fox, man. Yo, this is my fox boy. Yo, I'm boy collecting? No. Collecting VTuber guys. Hello, hello. Yeah, this is Swishy Tail. Sheppy, you are a part of the collection now. It's mostly a joke. He swooshed, yeah. Um, I think I can proceed with trying to do these body corners, actually. Like I think we're there. Should don't like the bottom. I might like the bottom of the cape. Might do the back of it a bit differently. Cuz it doesn't look like it moves at all. Why does it look like it's low? Like I know, but go technically speaking, but like it doesn't look good. That's what matters. What matters is how it looks. That what makes sense. Do, 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 do. What's happening? Bu, 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 bu. Swoosh, I just have my... You never figure out where to put my iPhone to track my face. You just put my view below me, but it's always kinda weird. Where do you set your webcam? Using the sides of my mon- the sides of your monitor. Uh... Yeah, um... Most part, most of the time, I would recommend having it at your face level or a little bit above. That's what I think would probably work. Um... My iPhone, the way I have my iPhone is literally at eye level with me, but my webcam is on top of my monitor angled down at me. Also, I don't know if it's something I did wrong, but I always have my phone vertical. Like I've seen people have it horizontal and I feel like it makes it worse. She's viewer count popping off. I have my viewer count hidden. Hey Mura, I'm planning making some key pixel art of tubers I enjoy. Would you be okay with being included? Sure, tag me when you post it. Sure, go crazy. Go wild. I'm trying to set this a little bit more. There's a positioning of the phone. I imagine vertical tracking is how it's supposed to be for tracking. Yeah, yeah, I think so too. Viewer count hidden is the only way. Viewer count hidden so that I don't think about it. Dang, is that camera going to be in the way when I'm trying to shoot people playing fighting games? You said at face level. Oh, well, okay. I say at face level. Yes, it's at face level, but it is to like the side of my monitor at face level. Like it's at the same height of my face, but it's slightly to the left of me. Oh, yeah! My setup is weird because I have three monitors. Okay, told you rigging. Rigging friend my brain, fried my brain, Mura. I've never been the same since. Do you have a fan for your phone? Nope. She just sits here. And I just hope for the best. My room's pretty cold, though. Oh my god. Coffee! Coffee! What's your favorite song? Answer or bonk? My favorite song lately has been that one song with a really long title that I sent Sheppy. Uh, wha- what was it called? It's called "I'm Tired of Dealing With Problems Bigger Than Mine" by Saint Jimmy. Oh my god, I thought I was following already. Hi, your overlays are so cute and your tablet and your model? Thank you, Luna! Thank you. Oh, that one. Honestly, banger. Thank you, Coffee. Yeah, that was one of the ones I sent you, Coffee. Welcome in, Luna. Welcome in. Okay, but still bonk? No! I answered the question specifically so I didn't get bonked! Why would you do this to me? How's the stream been so far? We're chilling. Um, we're chilling. I think I'm about ready to start the corners. The body corners. Like we did the up and down. No! Coffee! You know what? I expect this from Coffee. Coffee's so mean to me forever. Coffee regularly bullying me. What do you mean? What do you mean, Bree love Mura? What do you mean? You said, literally, I, I was, I was on. I wasn't even online yet. I was sitting here setting up stream and Coffee comes in my chat and he starts throwing things at me. I was offline! What do you mean? Me bullying? Never. Wow! Seeing your tablet move and jiggle is so good. Your brain's so big. Thank you. But hold on, now I have to be deep fried, so um, rip my everything. There we go. Two minutes on the clock. Back in the microwave again. Did y'all miss being in the microwave? Did y'all miss being in the microwave? Yeah, I think um, I think we got up and down. Pretty good. I think we are good to start some other stuff now. Oh my god. Yeah, hi. Hi! The results of Remember to preheat the oven. This is the results of preheating the oven. Oh, that's crunch! Oh, that's crunch. Hey, hi, can I get uh, two Mc Chickens and an Oreo McFlurry? Ooh, McFlurry. Also hello baby, welcome in. Oh my god. Crunch, crunch. Yeah, they got me in here. Crispy. For no reason. For no reason. It makes me feel better, Mura. I dropped a Oh no, not your sweet tea! That does not make me feel better. That makes me feel so sad. I really want to drink that, man? Crispy, both freezer dried and sizzled at the same time. Correct. Okay, I need to figure out actual food to go with my Bobo. Get some food proper. Get some food. I need to get some food after this stream. I don't know what I'm gonna get. I don't know yet. Problem for future me. Alright, yeah. I'm gonna try and, we're gonna save and go ahead and do a body course. I might save another version, actually. Let me do that. Hi. Get some beans! Oda kokamura at 800 degrees Fahrenheit. Wait, no, she is overcooked? No, that's how I get crispy. McDonald's? Hmm, not feeling. Not feeling right now. Someone say bean? I don't like that the word beans can summon you. Yeah, boy. Alright, let me save another version. Save another version. One dash three before I synthesize these body corners. Okay. Beans! Bro, she bugging man. Bro, bro, she made fucking beans. What the what? Bro, she made fucking beans, what the what? Murra, I can't find your refs? Uh, they're pinned in the thread on my Twitter here, one second. They're in the thread that is pinned to my Twitter. Let's me grab them for you. Oh my god? Nova, thank you for the thousand bitties, what the heck? Thank you! Yeah, those are my ref sheet. My reference sheets, my references. Also, hi, Bob! Hello! Bob, welcome in. Hello, hello. Those aren't my references, I have many. Hello, hello, hello. You got a fit preference? Nope. You can draw whichever one you like. None of them are a favorite for me. I think I draw the black dress one the most often just because it's the simplest. Cause it's the easiest. Oh no, I am reverb'd. Oh no! I am reverb'd. Oh no! I need to get a reference sheet made. I keep forgetting to look on Twitter. I have to finish some reference sheet commissions. I have like several. I have several of them to do. Two of them are fully sketched out and then three of them are started already. And there's one I haven't started. I haven't started the one for Beth. But that one I can take my time on, cause I know she doesn't care when I finish it. What was I doing? Oh, we were gonna synthesize corners. Yo, I completely forgot. Anyway. Give me a second. This is gonna be awful, I'm sure. Let's select all that. Alright, have fun in there. Yup, good luck. Let's link that shit together. Bam! See, like, it's never as bad as like the face corners. It's never as bad. I do need to lower the shoulders up here, though. It is never as bad. The drawing program I're using, this is a rigging pro- this is animation program called Live2D. Use the mini box? No! Why? Reverb rate, Zuchi. It's this nightmare that is called Live2D. Yeah, it's this awful program called- It's this awful program that is a human rights violation. I'm actually gonna hide the shoulder things for a second when I do this, because I need to see his arms. So I can get the shoulder rotation correctly. I look at my reference again, I'm pretty sure I already know what I wanna do, but just to be sure, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Destroyer of brain cells. Yeah, yeah. See, it's kinda doing it already. Let me see if I can grab... This. We're gonna bring this down on one side. Up on one. And I might reflect that as well. Who needs brain cells? Not me. Yes, I'm gonna bring that arm up. This should- And bring this one up. Who needs brain cells? I took up art, I have no brain cells. So true, so relatable. So real. You are so hashtag real. Yeah, I think I can work with that. For the most part. Yeah, I'm gonna have to reflect this. It's all fun and games until I have to go back and do bodies again. Okay, that's okay, that's okay. Figure it out. Figure it out as we go. Do I want the shoulder lower, actually? I want this even lower. Can make it lower. Or maybe make the other one higher. That might be a better idea. It might be more fun. Oh god, we are freezing! Let's go, let me see. Ahaha, we're getting some freezing finally. Oh yeah, it might be time to restart, actually. It's been four hours, huh? Let's restart Live2D. Also gonna close the second instance. I have running of Live2D. I don't think I'm gonna need it. Yeah, I don't think I'll need it for now. Alright, Sheppy, one moment. Now it's clips of your paint. And I am free from reverb. Hi! Can I get some Skittles? Tea bags and biscuits, tears up. Gotta go to Walmart, anyone want anything? Um, can I get a Kit Kat? Alright, we're back. Get a can of baked beans! No, you will have a York Patty and you are going to love it, cause it's been a while. That is so true, it has been a while. It's been a while since I've had a York Patty. Maybe I made his shoulder too high. Maybe I lower it, actually. Maybe I changed my mind. Maybe I'm a reformed person. Cause it kinda bothers me. We'll do that. We'll work with that. That seems fine. Alright, let me unclick this. Go to here. Reflect there. That that is the same and that I know how to move this. Go up. This go up. And this will go down a little, I think. Actually, I don't even think I need to do that. Alright, cool. Cool, cool, cool. Now it really looks like he's doing like a macho walk. I have to stop. Catwalk, Sheppy, yeah. He's, he's swaying. I'm raw beans. Can I get a can of non-baked beans? Chocolate-covered coffee beans? I have never had. Hello, hello! Eric, welcome in! Welcome in, welcome in. I wonder how fucked up this looks, wait. Like, I didn't even like go in here and look at the messed up body angles. Again, like I s- like I thought, the body angles are nowhere near as bad as the face was. He's getting there. We can make it better, though. We can always make it a little better. In the sense that the shoulder is like up on that one, so it should be lower on this one. So I'm gonna raise this side, I think. And raise this side. Yes. Uh, bonk? No! There's no need. I have started a movement. It's a bean movement? I don't look at chat for a few minutes, I look back and suddenly the last messages include beans. Coffee. Mine! Mine, what the heck? I thought we were bros! I thought we were homies, mine. Dude! I thought we were homies. I kiss you on the lips and you're gonna throw things at me? What the heck? No! I've had enough. It's from a place of love, broski, fine. Kissy, I can do that. I can do that, that's fine. Here, here I come. You ready? Yeah. Thank you, Coffee, for the care package. My care package include eating a few cheese it's, cause I have a craving. My big water bottle. I do be hydrating. I am blowing my nose, actually, hold on. That was the most hostile nose blowing I've done in a second. I was fighting for my life for a moment. If you don't bonk the homies here and there, are you really homies? Hmm, I don't know. Going into Walmart, looking like a hippie slut, we love to see it. Quite a look, I'd say. Quite a vibe? Quite some energy you have? I'm here, hello, Shawna. Welcome in. Uh-huh. Oh my god. I look forward to it fashion. I have too many tabs open. I have too many tabs open at all times. I say too many, but I have like, like eight, maybe? Goddess behavior? Absolutely. Looks like Sheppy's wearing a scouter right now. Yeah, cause it's highlighting it, hold on. Okay, um, I was gonna reflect, that's what I was gonna do. On the, on this. Make sure that these are the same. Do I need to bring this up even more, honestly? Like a little bit, maybe? Yeah, we can do that, okay. Reflect. Okay. Okay. Okay, okay, okay. Stone. Oh, the black and blonde. The black and blonde dreads. I am genuinely surprised, I don't see that more. I mean, like, of VTuber designs I've seen that have dreads. Cause I really like that color combo, actually. I think it's cute. Alright. Hungry? Me too. Where is the, the cape? Where'd it go? I've lost it. It's lost to the void. Nope, there it is. Come here. Okay. Now we have to fix this. These are not as they should be. We will fix this. Sure, like, so it won't cover the eyes. You could. You could do it, that would be a look. I just ate and I'm on the floor regretting it? Oh no, what happened? Blaze! Blaze! No! No, what happened? Hi, hungry. I'm not making that joke, sorry. I... I'm closing my eyes and pretending that joke didn't happen. Okay. Put this up here. Do we need to move this in? Oh, I do. We'll do that, we can do that. Did I need to move that in on this side too? I didn't even think about that. Oh, fuck. Okay. That's fine. That's fine, that's still doable. I'll just do like all on one side. Okay, shit. Bob, thank you, thank you! Thank you, thank you! Currently drawing Murra the boy collector holding her collected boys. I'm collecting them. My many sons. My, my many, many VTuber kids. Bro, I'm sorry, bro. Care package on cooldown won't stop me. I remembered Keishen's Wednesday rant and now I want- Keishen's Wendy's rant, rather, I can read. Now I want Wendy's? I keep saying this, Keishen unironically got me more addicted to Wendy's than I was before. It's a problem, it's a real problem. I'm not ordering food, though, I'm resisting. I'm gonna go downstairs and find something. Hey, y'all, it's time to stand! Up I go! I don't know, but I'm thinking something in the meal I ate my body is trying to reject because the reaction is similar to when I eat pork after being off for a long time. Oh no! Oh no, Blaze! It is time to no longer stand. No longer am I standing. Hello. Can I get a list of boys to make sure I don't forget any? I only have two. I only have two! I only have Shepby and Keishen. I only have Shepby and Keishen, I don't technically count... Sinny, cuz I need to remake Sinny's model. Making sure cuz I have horrible memory. You're good! Yes, I like Wendy's, I do enjoy Wendy's, I'm a Wendy's enjoyer. How good is Wendy's? I only have McDonald's kids seeing the occasional Domino's. I put Wendy's above McDonald's. There, there's my ranking with those. I'm gonna sound dumb, but I've never ordered chow mein, so I don't know what that is. I see, I see. Why are we talking about food? Now I'm hungry! I spared you on this day, Mura. What do you mean? What happened? What happened, Chudori? Prinny! Welcome back, Prinny, welcome back. Prinny, my beloved... Wendy's nuts! That's the only D's nuts joke I will accept, that one's pretty good! So true, Wendy's chicken nuggets with barbecue sauce and ranch. Wendy's chicken nuggets go hard. Wendy's chicken nuggets go unironically hard. Has anyone else had their new breakfast thing? Their, their new French toast sticks? Has anyone had, else had their new homestyle French toast sticks? Cuz those shits popped off! Yo, it makes me wanna order breakfast every day! They have French, yeah, it's a new thing, it's a new breakfast thing. Bruh. Homestyle French toast sticks. I am losing my mind. Burger King is top tier? Absolutely not! No! I haven't, I saw the ad. You saw the ad, right? I have not because I always forget to order in time. Oh my god, y'all gotta try them! If you like French toast sticks, they're really good. No Burger King in the trash, literally, yeah, no. Mm, goodbye. Wendy's chicken nuggets everywhere else. Also French toast sticks, they have French toast sticks! They have French toast sticks now, they go hard! Oh, that is clipping. I'm gonna have to fix the belts on the shoulders, but that is fine. Trying to make sure. About the clipping handles, okay. Other side. I haven't had French toast sticks in years, I will try Wendy's French toast sticks, please try Wendy's French toast sticks, I am quite a fan. I am a pleasant fan. Hold up, I'm Googling that right now. Ayo! I really like Wendy's breakfast, actually. Like their whole breakfast menu, actually. The potato wedges. Oh my god, oh my goodness! Nope, give me this. That is what I thought was going on, okay. Loving the music of Body Talk, yeah, it's music on Osu! Oh my god, I need to start playing Osu again. I am... Like trash at Osu now, cuz I haven't played in so long. They look so good, I'm having that next time, yes! I didn't know those, are they any amount of crispy? They're like a good mix, they're like a balance in crispiness and softness. You feel me? You feel me? It's a good balance, and that's what I like about it. Osu slaps, I need to play Osu on stream one day. And be absolute trash at it. But... He's in here. Okay. And down here. Now I'm wondering if I missed an edge on this side, cuz one of them was clipping. Okay, I didn't. I just need to fix the belts now, I think, hold on. Everyone who says they're trash at Osu has seemed to end up being a god at it. I'm like very mid. I would describe my Osu skills as extremely mid, I can't do streams or shit, I can barely do anything. I used to be better, but I stopped playing for a really long time. We love that for French toast sticks, I'm ordering some when I get paid, yes! Osu goes crazy every since. Bought a 240 Hz monitor with overclocking, oh my god. We showcased our Osu skills with Keishen's mupa the other day watching me! I'm going to close my eyes. I completely forgot about... No, actually, that's the end of the str- that's the end of the stream, that's the end of the stream, goodbye! I fucking... Every time! Every time! I can't... Exist. I mention Keishen, in any context and he appears. I hate it! I hate it here! Shut, shut your mouth. Shut, stop talking! I'm a red freak! The, the, the fucking thing is, the context, okay, here, the context. We were literally talking about Osu. We were talking about Osu. Okay? We were talking about Osu! I'm gonna have a breakdown, anyway! Hi Keishen! Blaze, I am begging you to stop making all of those faces! We were talking about Osu! I was talking about how I'm trash at Osu! I've had enough. I've had enough. Look at Shepby, wow. Wow, we're not, we're gonna ignore everything that just happened now. Look at Shepby, look at his tail swishy! Wow, and he has like body angles now, like he's moving a little? Oh my god, that's amazing. Wow! Look at him, wow, he's so pretty. I need to do, um, the, the bodiesy. And do the z on him. Shepby's giving you the smug look too. I'm gonna steal your bones! I'm going to steal something from your house! That's one of my favorite, favorite non-committal threats. I'm going to steal something from your house. Why the bones? So that I can put them in more live 2D models, obviously? Um, can I see this one? Now if I snatch Bree's bones for... No! I'm gonna do this and move this up instead. I feel like that shoulder is too high. I'm drawing Mura and I made her smile so uncanny valley. That's just how I look, what do you mean? No, that's fine. I just look like that by default. Let me get a boneless 2D model with a 2-liter Coke. Making a boneless live 2D model? Oh my god. Ain't no bones. The best part is they don't know what you'll steal from their house, exactly! They don't know what I'm stealing from their house, just I'm going to steal something from your house. The hardest song I've ever beaten was "Everything Will Freeze" on 5 stars. Yeah, no, I can't even do fucking 5 star maps. I like, I like cap at 4. I can sometimes do 4 star maps. Looks like, looks more like Mura the boy eater than the boy collector. Now why would you say that? Now why would you say that? I'm having a bad time. Recon 4k, Prinny! Prinny! Prinny, I'm going to get you! I'm going to find you! I am going to go to your exact location! I'm sorry, I love you, I'm gonna... Every day I suffer. Let me pause this. Hi Segoy! Mura's daily routine includes the pork, the pasta! That's pretty funny. DM me my bedroom's address, yo! Find these! Hi! Segoy! I am going to steal something from your house! I remember anyone who could do 3, 3 plus star maps, I can barely do 2 stars, oh my god, yeah. I just be struggling. Added to the list of things Mura has done to me! Okay, you can have that one, you can have that one, theft. Stole! I think it's fair to have that one. Maybe if you s- even if you struggle, if you are having fun, it's a W in my book. Aw, thank you. I play, that's another thing. I play Osu, if you see me playing Osu, I'm probably going through it mentally. Like if you see me playing Osu, assume I'm having a bad time. Cuz I open that game when I'm stressed. Ayosain though! That's literally what I do. Osu, battle to the death. Segoy is better at Osu than me, I'm not going to challenge him. You open Osu when you're stressed? Yeah. Do popping noises help to stress? Yes. Clicking the keys makes me less stressed. Sometimes you just wanna hit circles to a banger song without breaking your fingers, is that too much to ask? That's so fair, Chudori, that's so fair. So valid. You can take Salem from my house, take Dakota too. I don't know if I need more. I don't, I don't know if I need another cat. That's mood? Yes. I know I want to challenge him, oh my god, good luck. I know my place, I will not win in a fight in Osu against Segoy, I will fail miserably. Uh, where... Where are the, the, the belts? These, these, thank you. Selim needs another cat? Another? Another cat? If I select this, and... That's not what I wanted. Thank you. This is what I wanted, I was trying to do this. Scale that down, so that's like that, there we go, that's all I wanted. It's all I wanted. Okay. Your hair is so fun to draw, text you here, my beloved, aw, thank you. Oh my god. And Slinky can be friends? Yes. I feel like Slinky is like afraid of other cats, though. Slinky is very nice to people. He's very friendly, but he's afraid of other cats. He's not hostile toward them, he's just scared. Who? Peep! Hello, welcome in! Hi, 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 hello, hello. Welcome in, welcome in. I realized I forgot to give you ears, oop! No, how will I have my cute earrings? I need those. Feel like... Hmm, where is... I see this, can I see? This, yeah, I feel like this should be like a straighter line down than I am making it. And in turn, so should the belts. Oh my god, it got really sunny outside. I miss the clouds. I was having a good time with the overcast weather. Yeah. I feel like it's not as bad on the other side though, so I will leave that. Alright, let me see. Oh my god. I'm back, welcome back Shavana, hello. Bless you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Oh my god. Okay. Move. I think we got it, for the most part. I haven't done like z. And that's where the steps would be anyways, but... I feel like this is pretty good. Let me check for breaking. Especially around his neck, yeah, there's a little... On those upper corners, I might need to bring the collar in a bit. Okay. Oh my god. Also, I just noticed something. On here. On this side. I need to bring this in a little bit. Be like this, something like... Where it should be. Okay. And then up here on this... Bring this over. And bring that down, the necklace. The chain and the chest that shines while it's going around is nice, yeah, I have to take the other highlight out of that one, I forgot. And that one will reflect too. Oh. I just noticed they need to fix... Which is that? Is that, that's actually a gap, okay, ink. Let me do the shirt first. Worry about the shirt first, actually. Okay. That side's from... This, I need to go back here, let me in here. Why? Are you editing level 1? Stop it. Okay. Hello Rory, welcome in, welcome in. Alright, now I see the neck disconnecting, so hopefully I can just go back in and grab that now. Under XY body. What app you using? This is Live 2D. You're a great artist. I'm also an artist. Yo! Thank you. Oh my gosh. Okay, yeah, cool. I can just bring that down a little and it's fine. Cool. Cool, cool, cool. I wasn't entirely confident that would work. I just need to bring it down altogether. I'm gonna need to glue eventually, but not now. I don't wanna deal with that. Bring that. I'm gonna bring this in a little. Okay. Thank you! Slinky woke up. Is it time for him to leave my room again? It's a possibility. Okay. I think that's good for the lower one. Let me do the upper one. Ain't she pretty? I love your model. Thank you! Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Good morning, Slinky. Yes. Not gonna lie, I keep getting notifications because shooting my shot in Iron Mouse replies getting noticed. I saw that too! Oh my god. That was fun. Yo, everyone's like, "Gasp, I've never seen a VTuber look like that before." Yo, they wilded. Let's go, Keishin. Yes. Slinky wants to leave my room. Give me a second. Slinky still here, he changes mine. Almost 900 likes and I'm like, "Nani, if I get picked for whatever she's playing, that'd be so dope." That would be insane. I hope it happens. I hope it happens. Yeah! No, you must hydrate. Yeah, I do. I do need to hydrate. My big water bottle. What was I doing? Oh, the other necklace. Ew. She followed me almost 2 years ago when all I had was viewership and thought I was cool, so I'm sitting here like, "Is it time?" Is it time? That would be, uh, very cool. That would be insanely cool. Oh my god. Yo, let's go! So what are you making? I'm making a fox boy. Hold on. I'm trying to make sure his necklace isn't clipping anymore. Uh, this is, if I give myself a shout out. Not my caps lock being on. Hold on. Congrats kissing! That's a fun typo of his name. There you go. That is Sheppy. That is whose model I'm working on. Oh shit. There we go. Okay, so, I go in here. I do be kissing Shinobi. Yo, for real? Like, for real now? Yo? Eh, I mean, I need if you're offering. I need to fucking stop. I can't do this. I can't do this. I haven't seen your mall without glasses? Yeah, hi. Here, let me get, hi. Offering me to me, dude! He's not wrong. Hi, Chi! I be having problems. Stop taking pictures. Stop it. Stop it. Oh my god, I can give a kissy. Hi! There you go. Where's Shinobi breathe? Good question. I'm being bullied. Who deserved this? We close, we the close up? Okay, fine, fine. I'll take it. I'll take it. But yeah, sometimes I don't have glasses on. And I do have my jacket on, but my jacket could come off too. Hey Murra, sorry, slow reply. Okay. Oh right, I was looking at his necklace. His necklace was what I was worried about. Still, it might be because of the Z. And if that's the case, then I might just do a Z adjustment instead. Here Demon, but we save your progress? Sure. Wait, I already did. There's, I've, I've already saved. I cannot save again. Riggie time, I can meat moving. It's a little meat moving time, bone installation. Do you have a YouTube? Yes. If I do, I have a socials command. Those are all my links. My YouTube is also, you know, the one connected to my Twitch. It's on my profile. A package for you. Thank you proper! But yeah, I have a YouTube I need to upload to it more. Need to edit videos and stuff, but I'd rather be making models right now. I'm wondering, cause I, if I go up here... See, there is Z movement with this necklace. And I think that's part of the issue. Well, it's not like, I might be able to just take it out of there instead. I'll be back soon. I need a shower. I'm sweaty. You're so valid. Have a nice shower, Prini. Alright, let me see then. This may be a better idea. Just not having this in here and instead putting it with everything else. Under here. I'm gonna put this in here. See if that immediately breaks anything. Not really. And then this reflection, and then also be just in here somewhere. Put it in here. Okay. Oh, I still need to take out that other reflection on his chain. Wait, fuck. Where is that? You, come here. Up here. There we go. Now I can save Osu. Okay. Let me in. God, look at the reflection on the necklace though. That's cute. Oh, I am glad I went through the effort to do that. That's pretty. But how are we doing clipping wise? Oh, it's time to stand again. Rip looking good with the shine. Yes! It looks pretty. Pretty. He is shiny. That's his charm point. He doesn't have glitter, he has reflections. I'm having fun doing this. Anyway, it's time to stand. Time to stand up for a minute. We are no longer standing. We're no longer standing. I am done standing. My box didn't work, I demand a refund. Oh, here, hold on. Here, hold on. It was a gnome! You know what? I'm waiting for those ear wiggles. Yeah, we'll probably do ear wiggles on Tuesday. Or I might do like one of them off stream and do the other one on stream, cause I'm not entirely sure how it's gonna work out. Look at him. Oh god, I need to stop going a little too crazy, cause the physics can't keep up. Sugoi, what did I do this time? What did I do this time, Sugoi? What have I done? His entire vibe feels like having an iced mocha in a cozy library at the fireplace warming from behind, reading some fluffy romance. We'll save cozy vibes. Aw. This is a really big complicated. You burnt my pancakes? I'm making you pancakes? I would never. Thank you for the follows. Oh my god. Hi. Anyway, I'm still obsessed with the reflections. Look at the, look at him. He's a shiny boy. He can't help but be a shiny, shiny boy. I still need to fix the necklace though. They're still like clipping. Which is a pain. I'm wondering if I should just make like a Z adjust instead on just the upper one, cause it's not even like the lower one that I see too much issue with. He's a shiny boy. You burned pancakes? I did nothing of the sort. Sugoi is spreading nothing but lies about me. Wow. This is why I like having body physics, cause like it's way more fun to look at. Even without like all the clothing and hair physics, I'm just sitting here like, wow. Dude, I thought Sugoi didn't eat carbs. Is he caught in a lie? I don't know this information, so... I'm getting distracted. I'm getting very distracted by the shiny necklace. When this shiny necklace has physics, I'm just gonna be in here doing this for like 20 minutes straight. I'm just gonna be in here. Um, but yeah, let's see. What specifically on this do I need to fix? I think I might honestly just try putting a Z adjust over it and then binding that to our angle Z up here. And then doing like a rotation and see if that helps remedy the problem. So let's see. Add another one. No rigging, only shiny. Not gonna lie, I feel like when I get the model, I'll be in VTube studio all day. Oh no. Please have as much fun as you desire. Alright, so let's put this here. And then... Slinky wants to leave my room again. Hold on. Hello? Wham, oh my god. I just finished drawing the tiny Keishin that you hold. And all I have to say is, "She be booba." He still has booba. That's kinda funny. Yo, Charles, welcome in. Welcome in, welcome in. Yellow pocket worm, welcome in, welcome in. So yeah, I'm wondering if I can just like rotate this and then stop having the issues I continue to have. I just like do something like that and then reflect. See if that helps at all. She be Keishin booba, apparently. Cause I think the problem is the Z. But I could be wrong. Where's the second chain? You should give your model sidekick because demon. So I do have little mascot characters. I just have not drawn or posted about them since I got them. Um, my friend Iris was the one who designed them. Uh, fuck. I'd never remember how to spell their URL, so hold on. Ew. Here, let me get, here's their Twitter. My friend Iris, which if you, if you like art, you should follow Iris. Iris makes good art. But Iris was the one that designed my silly little mascot characters. Got the super cute mascots, yeah. Those silly little, they like literally like little plushy looking creatures. I can hear my dog eating drywall. Oh no. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Now, why would you throw things at me, dolphin? Hi dolphin. Welcome in. I love Cal so much. Yeah, that's my homie. That's my friend. Me and Cal go way back. Me and Cal go way back. Like, we were in fandoms together for years. That's a homie. That's a homie right there. I return, welcome back, Riku. I just want this necklace to not clip when I move him around. That's all they want. That's all they want. Oh, that is, that is part of the problem probably. What the fuck is going on here? Oh, this, this one, this one's wrong too. This one, this one's wrong too. Get... Get out of there. How dare you? Okay. Okay! How does it have my drawing table? How am I supposed to draw in these conditions? How am I supposed to live, laugh, love in these conditions? Okay, give me a, give me a this maybe? Yes. Okay. Thank you for the hand stretch. Give me just a second. I really hope I got it for the most part this time. Me versus this necklace for real. It looks okay, but we won't know until it's in there, so... Bree, I know it's been almost five hours, but when do we stop preheating? No, you have to keep preheating. You're done preheating when the stream is over! Thinking about getting a throne, you could! How am I supposed to live, laugh, love in these conditions? Let me see your necklace... Oh? I think? For the most part, I got it. Oh, this like upper angle? Maybe I need it... Why? Why are you so... Can I see Sheppy's legs? Yes! Here's Sheppy. Let me be deep fried and be sad about it. Anyway, I'm sad now. He has boots, yeah. Oh, that was the wrong command, hold on. There we go. So how are y'all doing since I'm being forced to be in the microwave? How are y'all doing? Are y'all doing better than me? Since I'm in the microwave? Keep putting me in the mic... Stop throwing shit at me! Have I been through enough? Have I not been through enough? Okay. Okay, Keishin, really? Put some glasses on, thanks Pia. Frius, no, 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 we fry you! Have I not been through enough, truly? Have I not? I'm gonna close my eyes forever. Don't smile at me! The kissy, wait, the deep fried kissy? Okay, hold on. Fine, fine, hold on. How could you do this to your own? Now we're in the microwave together, are we? Are we in the microwave together? Is this the experience? I'm literally just sitting here until I'm no longer deep fried, like I'm that mad about it, hi. Okay! The timing on that was scary! All these beautiful people in chat, there's so many beautiful people in chat today. And they're all being mean to me! The deep, the end of the deep fry would be cool? That would be kinda funny. There, you're happy? I just got here. Okay, fine, Pia, Pia's been nice to me. Pia's been nice to me. No one else has! I wanna do my nails forty minutes that I only did my thumb, it takes so much time. That is a mood. I was supposed to do my nails yesterday and I didn't. No, you little reverse card. I haven't been nice to Bree. Proper's been pretty nice, Proper's been nice. Wow. All of you collective, chat as a collective has not been nice to me today. Chat as a collective, okay? Chat as a collective, the majority has been mean! Look at him, they're still breaking though. And I think... I don't know what that's the issue of. Let me see if I can replicate that in here actually, let me see. If it's... I'm assuming it's like, if I put Z and X and Y, for example. Like drag this up or whatever. Yeah, so is it the X that's the problem? Or is it the Z? If it's the X, I might just need to put the necklace back in here. No. I think it's the X, cuz the X has a slight side to side movement I didn't account for. Okay. I think tiny Sheppy is my favorite part of this drawing so far, he looks so cute and small. Oh my god, he's just a little guy. He's just a little guy, Sheppy is a wholesome, wholesome guy. Okay. He's one good fox boy. Shiny, yes! What color are his peepers? He has brown eyes! He actually has brown eyes, that's a rare color in the VTuber sphere. I'm just a little guy trying to give smiles, exactly! We love Sheppy! He's just a little guy! I'm trying to think. I could make... Another deformer. To... Account for the X... Adjustment. This is probably a bad idea. I feel like at this point, I'm just making it worse, but let's see, just for funsies! X. Create. And then this one is for angle X. Like that. Then we go here. Okay. Gimme my windows back, please. Very common VTuber eye color, blue-yellow-pink. True! I put red in there too, maybe. I need some advice, I only have like thirty dollars, but I'm hungry and depressed, so share with me! Nope, that's your last thirty dollars, hold on! Yeah, Bree, I started playing Tears of Themis and now I've been dragged back into the Oda Mavers. You should play the sub! I say as I have not been doing my chatrooms. Men are purple, ooh. Did I fix the top one? Did I fix the top one is what I'm wondering. There isn't a great way to do this. I'm just gonna accept this in a second. And do with it later. Deal with the problem later. I wonder if I could do... Do we have Discord server? No, I do not have a Discord server. I do not. Yeah, put it lower, maybe that wasn't the move. I got those brown peepers, yo! Yo! Let's go! Eyes are pink, but that's cuz pink is my branding. Yeah, I am acceptance. Acceptance that I will not get it perfect in a second. And I will worry about this more later. Okay. Red and red, oh, I wanna play with Sheppy's hair so bad. He looks like I could give him a head pat. He looks like I could give him a head pat. Oh, that's another thing! Sheppy, are you in chat? Sheppy, are you here? I have a question. Must pat. Sheppy here, Sheppy, my beloved! I have a question for you, how tall is Sheppy? How tall is this fox boy? I'm gonna see if I can do Z. I'm gonna see if I can do body Z real quick. Now, for Z, I have rotation deformers actually. There should be anyways, should be like one or two. Make an underscore. Five, ten, you're taller than me, okay! Sheppy, you are taller than me! Congratulations on still being taller than me! Man! Man! Oh my god, I'm taller than both of you. Fashion, you are far taller than me! This rotation is the one I was thinking of, okay, so, we're gonna... Put this here. Um... I guess upper... Rotation? So this is gonna fucking disconnect him, but hold on. Snaps him in half. Snaps him in half! Laughs in six one, crying and sobbing. I'm only like exactly five feet tall. I'm taller than you, I'm five three. A six one gang? Why must you be taller than me? Maybe VTuber is like eight foot two? That's a valid height. That's a climbable height. I need this to be a whole number, so let's make this eleven. And negative eleven. I almost put the negative one hundred and eleven, that would've snapped his body in half like a toothpick! Um, okay, so from there, I'm gonna do some adjustment on the belt and I'm gonna do some adjustment on his clothes. So... Make a Z for this one. Not gonna do much on the belt, because, you know? Doesn't make as much sense for the belt to like stretch and switch. Push, I suppose. Oh! I meant to put this on the whole belt group, hold on. I was trying to get this one, there we go. Why are you doing this? Why are you not putting where I want you to be? I want this one. There we go. Okay, go here, go here. Go here. We'll do just a little. And the rest will be the clothes moving. Cuz that would make more sense. There we go, both sides. Hi! Front of the jacket, these will both get Z. Create. Z. Create. Do one out of ten. Okay. And this side. There we go. Perfect, okay, cool, 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 cool. Merry, merry everyone, hello, Zini, welcome in! Um, what is happening? No, Bui, I'm sorry for being tall, please don't cut me down! No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you in half, I was just trying to get these angles. Five four, which is why I said fashion will be model height, amazing. Legendary behavior, I think. Even my VTuber is short though, I did not compensate for anything. I am just this height. Did you draw the character as well? Yes, yes I did! If you move Sheppy a little more, he'll break like a toothpick! No! Well, Sheppy got height, yeah, Sheppy got tall. Can I ask a rigging question? Hi Trumer! I think you were here earlier, I don't know if I said hi. But yeah, sure, I can try and help. Alright, um, give me... Give me... I'm gonna make some adjustments on the front. These side parts. Oh, I accidentally made it a nine by ten, I did not need to do that for this actually. Um, here, V5. V5. I don't even know if I need like... That much, that should be okay. I think Slinky's outside my room. Hello? Any idea why art mesh won't, wouldn't deform when you place a deformer? And the deformer is manipulated? Um... I can think of a couple reasons, I think. Is the art mesh under a rotation deformer that is above... That's under a warp deformer? Like, is it nested like art mesh, then rotation deformer, then the other thing? That's the first thing I think of, cuz I'd done that before. And then... Um... It's all just warps, okay? Um... Oh shit! Nice music, thank you, hello Jay, welcome in! The loaf demands entry, the loaf is in the room, he is fine. I'm glad you're finally able to catch a stream, yeah, the stream sponsor is Spotify! Wanna break from the ads? Um... Trum, I am thinking. This is my break from the ads, ay! I'm thinking LiveTD is just broken at this point, it honestly could be. And you've like tried like, you know, exiting out of the project and reloading and everything already, I assume. Have you tried like duplicating the art mesh and seeing if it still does it even with a duplicate? No, I'll try that. Alright, good luck, Shroomer! Freaking Live2D. God, I was battling Live2D last night, doing this tail. Have you tried asking it to work nicely? Oh, I wish it was that easy. I'm gonna bring this up a little. I'm gonna bring like this up, all, all of this up a little. Or actually, don't I have another rotator? Like below this one? Yeah, I have this one as well. Yeah, I have this one that has the whole cape. Uh, let's see, upper body rotation. We'll name it this. Rotation. Oh my god, hi Jewel! Jewel, welcome in. The amount of times I say or think, "Why are you doing that?", literally same. I'm like, "What do you want from me?" What is it, my baby boy? Hold on, I have to stand anyways. I understand. What's wrong, Slinky? What's up? There you go. Still longer than I'm standing. Okay. Not gonna lie, I've outloud told Live2D your mom was a hoe out of frustration. God, what a mood! Okay, what was I doing? Oh, I was gonna set this on Z too. Hello, hello, Vixen, welcome in. Welcome on in. Hi! Your mom, welcome in. Your mom looks like she's doing homework but she falls asleep. That's cute. I'm gonna give like this a little, little bit, like, not even that, we'll do 3. We'll do a 3 degree angle. Do I have another rotation after this one? I thought so. Bonk, did it go through? Hold on. I swear. I wonder what the reason why sometimes mine don't go through, because I swear, I'm the only one that be having these issues with Kabon. Use Mac. Hello! Uh, Asus? Asus maybe? Welcome in. Welcome in, we're doing a little rigging. Well, he's swaying for real now. This one too. Um, let's put this here. Do a nice 2 degrees. Wait, no. Have to be over here first. And then, negative 2. And we'll see if I regret my decision. Slay! More time consuming 2D, 3D, or PNG? I haven't made 3D, so I don't have the, the point of reference. Um... So I can't say. I can tell you that a PNG would be faster than either of those. I know nothing of 3D modeling. Oh shit, now he's moving! Now we're moving. Ooh, I wonder if I can, um, PNG definitely faster. I wonder if I can, uh... He looks goofy, wait. That's like how my model moves. Okay, take 3D off of it, then 2D would be more consuming than a PNG, yes. He's moving, he's like going around in a circle. It's kinda funny. Like, here it's really funny, I'm sure in actual tracking, this would be fine, but here it's really funny looking. Someone who's done all 3, 3D is more time consuming. There you go, thank you, Blue. Also, hi Arctic! Hello, welcome in. Been downloading Live2D but it didn't work so well, you really wanna go see my sister, Adatus? From the waist up, he is spinning. He is moving. I think it's kinda funny. I think it's entertaining. Oh, like, Slinky's going insane again, behind me. Uh, are you okay over there? Oh, he's about to go under my bed, I think. He going around town! I return with refreshing cola. Sheppy, Sheppy, I've done, you're going in circles now! He do be spinning. He do be spinning, though. Look at him go! There's a gnome. Sheppy! No, this is fine, actually. It's the eyes for me. Look at the reflection on his necklace, though. Look at that, isn't that pretty? He's shiny. What was I about to do? I don't remember what I was act- I was actually gonna come in here and do something and I don't remember what it was. Oh, I wanted to see if I could take Body Z and invert it. Reflect. I'll just say peekers, not eyes, peepers. He is like, looking. This is so much funnier. Okay, let's stop. Um, now what I have, the way I have it on Keishen's model is that his body X is actually reflected. Like, it's like inverted. Um, and I don't know if I can do that here, actually. Here, let me disable Z for a second, because there's too much going on. Reflect this. Yeah, this is how I have it on Keishen's model. Where like the head goes one way and the body goes the opposite direction. I think it's kind of a look! I think it's kind of an option. I was gone for an entire week and only had 3 notifications, wow! Hello! It do be a look, I like that. Yeah, I think it's like more interesting than standard, so... You know. Can have it. Why not? I might go into Z and fucking tone down some of the bullshit I've done. Because he do be kinda moving like a lot. I don't know if he needs this extent, also I see things breaking. Let's see. Um, which one? Which one of these rotations do I wanna tone down? Which degree was this? 3, and then that one's 2. This one is high, this one's an 11. So let's maybe tone that one down. Put it at like a, like a 6 instead. And adjust as needed. I'm having things thrown at me. Sorry, I can't stop myself. I am going to cry. I'm feeling this might be... Yeah. I'll see about fixing that later. Oh my god. Hand stretch, thank you, Breville, thank you! I do. I should stretch. Me hands. Coffee! Coffee, I'm gonna come find you. Hey, Coffee! Coffee, have you worked on that thing you have due in 4 days, in 3 days? Coffee, hey, Coffee, hi. Coffee, have you worked on that thing, um, that you were supposed to do? Coffee, hey, hey, Coffee! There are he- there are furry hentai artists on Twitch? I don't think you would be able to stream that. I mean, in reality, when you turn your head, your body doesn't exactly follow your body if you put your focus on a certain axis, so this is pretty much realistic. Yeah, I like it. I've given him less. No, there are? Yo, that's kinda crazy. Look at him go! I wanna try something. I wanna try something, I wanna test something. I don't know if it's gonna work. Follow your head. Yeah, I know what you mean. I'm supposed to release on 31st and I simply did not start yet. Hey, hey, Coffee, what if you, um, started the thing you're supposed to work on? Yeah. In Korean hentai artists? This is like that thing where, oh my god, I was watching a critical video about a streamer that was like just straight up having sex on stream and they got banned but only for 7 days. If you just scroll down far enough in the just chatting, just chatting category. If I maybe didn't, if I maybe didn't, it kept throwing things at you, it's... Coffee, you have things to work on. Voice critical, eh? Oh yeah, Charlie. Oh, I am being thrown things at, anyway. Hello, Little Miss Creep, welcome in. I heard about that and it's crazy. Yeah, I'm like, well... Uh, Twitch is a platform that exists. How about that? Imagine having spoons. OMG, what? They're on the wrong platform for that, what the fuck? Twitch is a platform that exists, I think. I've come to accept. Oh, I know how to fix this, actually. Did you hear about the Shy Lily ban? Shy Lily got banned? For what? Hello, Slinky. Easily one of the streaming platforms ever! Oh no, Coffee knows about this. Oh no, what the fuck was this one? It was so dumb? Oh no. This is what they ignore is wild. So true, so true! Twitch is once again a platform, and I'm not going to say anything more than that. Shy Lily tried to get answers from Twitch, but they haven't told her. I... She doesn't know what she got banned for. I... I'm not even surprised. I'm not even surprised, really. I, mm, well... Unfortunate, I guess. Um, let's see, let's see. Uh, what was I about to do? Oh, I was thinking Z. I was looking at the rotation angles again, because I had an idea, but I don't know if it's an actual applicable thing I can do to this one. If I were hypothetically invert these numbers. Just to see what this looks like, because I'm curious. Invert this one, and then invert the one above it. That's how you get the hip sway! Yo, I just figured out the hip sway on accident! Yo, I figured it out on accident! That's how you do it! So that's how it works! I'm not gonna do that here, but noted, yo! I wanted to do that on my next model. Yo, look at him! So that's how, okay, that makes sense. Got that sway. Court of white boy busting it down sexual style! Very slay. Sassy. Oh my god, look at him. How would you do that, though? So the way I have his body set up, I have, uh, like 4 rotation deformers that go through his body. So I have this one like, that's all the way up here that has his legs, and then I have one in the same spot, right? I got this one. Then I have one that's higher at the base of his belt. Right there. And then I have another one that is above his belt. So, I have this very top one in the opposite direction of all the other ones, and it made the hips sway. That's so funny. I did that on accident, yo! Yo, I am gaining knowledge that I don't need. Yo! Look at him go! Oh shit, I'm freezing! 3D for, they under-scrated for 3D model and they considered it sort of inappropriate, apparently banned for 3 days. What the fuck? There, I, mm... I don't even think, if sh- if she was gonna get banned, I don't even think it should've been that long, like, that's stupid. Just rotation deformers? Yeah, I have this as just rotation deformers. What the fuck? Anyway. Look at him go. I'm sorry, Sheppy, I keep making you do silly things. Uh, let me put that back. What happens if I leave like one of them? And then put the other one back? By like, make it... This might just break something. It's like less of a hip sway. I think his legs are disconnecting a little, though. Yeah. Busting it down sexual style. Anyway, let me put them back. Uh, da-da-da-da-da, this one. I'll put it back to what I originally had. And I would like to export this and then call that a stream. Okay? So let's do that. I'd like to export this version. Okay. Save! Good progress today, Bri, thank you! Oh my god. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and just try to export it straight from here and not restart, but we'll see what happens. Let it freeze for a bit. Hi. This is the part of the stream where Live2D freezes while I try to export a model. The sway is so nice, not gonna lie. It's k- kind of a look. I was like, yo, I was pleasantly surprised. Sheppy's hips don't lie, who are we raiding? I don't know. I have no idea, actually. Y'all wanna fucking raid Sagoi? Y'all wanna raid Sagoi? Y'all wanna raid Segoy? Oh no. Do it. Should we raid Segoy? Revenge. I'm being bullied, as per usual. If we raided Segoy, it's one of the rare times I don't pass y'all to another art stream. Kissy, I got you. There you go. Here's another kissy. Okay. Y'all are being mean. I see who is deserving of kisses and who is not. And Salem. And Sheppy. Mwah to my love. Oh my god. Three more kissy. Riku, you just threw stuff at me and now you wanna kissy? What the heck? You just threw stuff at me. Okay, it's exporting. Let me do this and choose where I want. Let me make a new folder. Dash seven. Okay, go in here. I will give a kissy. Hold on. Seven. Or I cannot type, I guess. Okay, there we go. It is exporting. Hello. Kissy. And one for Zini. Mwah, there you go. I love you. Oh my god. No way. No way, no way. No way, you're joking. A mean lovable friend. I am being so, everyone's so mean. No. I didn't, I didn't. Oh my god. Did I miss one? Did I miss any? I might've. I don't know. Anyway. Came back with snacks. Yeah, Salem's here. Care package, thank you. While I'm waiting. It is saving now. You can't, here. There is the progress bar now, but, um, nothing else is happening. Oh. Nano, thank you for the host. Saving POV. Me staring at my computer screen. Eyeblasses again. Oh my god. As soon as you did small puffs today. Yeah, when I'm rigging, I usually put my hair up because otherwise my hair blocks a good chunk of the screen. Get started on the art. Get started on some art. Small puffs, with the small puffs. I wish I had better cheek puffs, but I don't feel like opening this model again. I really don't. I really don't. Not my glasses again. Need to make food but no energy, I cry. Same. Same. You should get started on the things you need to work on. Coffee. It's almost done. Almost done. I should make a nodders emote. I'm surprised I haven't thought of that. I made Keishen's nodders emote before I made my own. Hi mom, I will do my homework. Do your homework. Okay. Um, let's see, let's see. Um, I need this. I need to go over here. Uh, we're gonna import a model over folder. Thank you. Press stop. Okay. Okay. You have to reload it anyways. Um, should be a seven. Okay, yeah, hold on. Looking for a seven. There it is. Lower the price of many bonks? No. Copy setup. Copy all these. He doesn't have any expressions. So that should be good. Ay, yo, look at that tail moving. Ah, shit. Okay, yeah. Um, let's go ahead and... Hi. I'm in the screen again. Look at his tail. Oh, look at his tail. Oh, I am so pleased. How's he moving, though? Overall. Doesn't have any body physics, like, like on his arms, rather. Yay. He's moving. Tail, yeah. Oh, actually, I wonder... Here, hold on. Um, yeah, hold on. Oh, wait, no, I would've had to do that on his other model. I didn't mean to pin him either. There we go. Bestest boy. Hi. He is moving. He is moving. And I'm actively looking for stuff breaking. I feel like... I think I did. God, fucking game, I keep doing that. I didn't mean to do that. Um... Yes. I need to edit his settings, actually. Hi Corvo. Corvo, you came in at the end. We're about to be done. He, he's kinda hot, like super hot. Yo, Sheppy, you're super hot. I know I was at work, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Then that's fine. You can't help that you got work. Hi. Me and Sheppy be next to each other? Can I grab you? Did I actually accidentally lock him again? Unlock all items. Yes, okay, hi. Here we go. Doesn't proportion with each other. Hi. He's so pretty. Xomishpointcoms, thank you. This is great, this is looking great. Ooh, boy, thank you. Can't wait till he has physics, like hair physics and clothing physics and stuff. That's gonna be fun. The, oh no, he's hot. Oh my god. Yeah. He looks so alive, yo. Thank you. I tried my best. He's so cute. I love his tiefers. He has fangs. He's a fox boy with fangs, and you wouldn't know unless he smiles. But yeah. I'm glad you think it's looking good. Um, we're actually really close to being done with him, now that I think about it. Like, we're pretty close. I did wanna try one thing. Um... If I... If I change the settings... There's gonna be two Sheppys for a second. If I change the settings on the actual model, will that update the item? I don't know if I would have to, like, reload it or not, but I wanna try something. Hi. I am Sheppy now. This looks very silly. Anyway, um... I go in my settings. Okay. Okay, I go in the settings. Okay. I go over here. New expression, I create new expression. I have a particular toggle. This one. No, this one. Okay? About on one. And we have to name it. And then can save it. Okay? And then if you add expression. Um, just put it on a hot keys. We'll do numpad. Because... I don't think I have anything there on my other model. Yeah, okay, so he do- he does need to be reloaded. Yeah. Big tail. This is just kinda goofy. Immense tail. He has so much tail power. Two Shep- two Sheppy, oh man, sounds like a part of me. Ha ha. Yeah. Damn, bro, is chill like that? Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Eating cheesy meals and garlic tuna. Delicious, tasty. Alrighty then. I think he looks alright so far. Pleasantly surprised. So... Yeah. Oh, that was the other thing. So, on his previous models, uh... Rude? Um, yeah, we're gonna raid someone. But I'm, the, I had the frown on his mouth like really, really strong. Like, it was like goofy looking, so I made it like less powerful. So now he frowns. He looks real sad. Oh no. It's like puppy dog face. Is the fair to be done about an hour? Oh my god. Please post it and tag me. I would appreciate it. Who hurt him? Wee. So yeah, so now that can go up and down. I'll be back. Welcome back. Hi, I'm piloting Sheppy for a bit. Sad boy. The gold shine moves too. Yeah, it's all reflective. All reflective shit. I did that on purpose. Oh, wait. Let me adjust the setting, now that I think about it. Let me put chill away, cuz that's fucking distracting. Uh, if I go in here... Before I forget. I always put Y. See, it's on thirty. I always put this like way lower than it needs to be. But I'm like fifteen. Why not? So that I can get the up and down movement like way more intense. There we go. Stop being reflective. No! Yeah, there you go. It's reflective. We have reflections. Alright. Wow. Okay. He is shiny. He's a shiny boy. Whoa. Yeah. There we go. Azora! Hi. We're checking him out. His tail. His tail too. Little gold never hurt anyone. He looks good. I'm pleasantly surprised with how he's turning out. That's so sick. Please, hello, hi. We're not even done. We gotta do like his hair physics and his clothing physics and stuff. I need to figure out what I wanna do with his legs. I'll figure that out off-stream, cuz that's gonna be annoying to figure out. Okay. Let me stop being Sheppy. But, um, he looks good. Uh, let's see, let's see. But, uh, but, uh... I get them all from you if I ever decide I wanna get them all from someone. Aw, thank you. I am just one of the many model makers out here. Alright. Hello. Did you miss me? I am back. Alright, let me go check screen. Hi. Where are we going? Where are we dropping? God, I would love to go mall. Get a mail mall from you. You make the handsomest voice. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Where we drop Tilt Tower? Oh my god. No, I was thinking about dropping Alaf at Segoy, just cuz... Cuz he's live. For no reason other than he is live. Uh, let's see, let's see. Yeah, sure, why not? Okay. We drop him by Wendy's. I wish. I wish we were dropping by Wendy's. I want Wendy's. But I'm not going to order Wendy's. I'm going to resist, okay? That's a reasonable thing to do. And thank you for all the follows. Thank you. Alrighty then. Um... I will be back Tuesday morning, same time. Uh, unless something happens. But, you know, we'll be working on Sheppy's model again. I'm gonna work on some stuff off-stream and hopefully I will be doing some physics. That would be ideal. Um... We'll see. That would be the ideal scenario. Thank you so much for hanging out with me. Thank you for spending your morning with me. I really appreciate it. Have a lovely break. Yes. Yes, thank you, thank you. This has been fun. Have a good rest of your weekend. Yes, y'all too. Thanks for the stream. Watching Sheppy progress is always fun. Thank you, Sheppy. Thank you. Okay. We are going to raid my homie Segoy. Um, if you don't know, Segoy is an eighteen-plus streamer. If you're not eighteen-plus, then don't participate in the raid. Skedaddle. You know? But, uh, here are raid messages. If you have my sub badges, my emotes, you can use the first one. And if you don't, you can just use heart emojis, okay? Thank you so much for hanging out with me. I really heckin' appreciate it. Y'all are so sweet, okay? Back in the green weekend. Yeah, thank you. Alrighty. Thank you, thank you for hanging out with me. I will see you again soon. If not, I'll be on Twitter, like, per usual. But yeah. Thank you again. Thank you. Bye bye, everyone. Bye bye.